It is 6:30, and I'd like to call the meeting of the Situate Select Board to order. Do I hear an acceptance of the agenda?
No move.
Moved by Ms. Canfield.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero, motion carries. Mr. Vignani is running late, and Mr. Goodrich was not feeling well and felt as though spreading whatever germ he has was not advisable. So, we can go on to walk-ins. Is anyone here as a walk-in? All right. Moving right along, the report of the town administrator. Jim?
Good evening. We'll start with our water update as usual, and it keeps getting shorter as the season goes on. We are doing some installation work on Rainbow Court that will continue. We're still testing and training employees on the green sand filter on well 17A. We should be getting ready to have DEP come in and do the final test and permit that shortly. As we've talked about, the pilot study at the water treatment plant is finished for now. They will be back in the winter with the cold water and the cold weather to do some more testing. We are expecting the data from the fall testing to be available to us sometime before the end of the month, and we'll be able to view that. So, we'll look forward to what that looks like when it comes in. COVID cases, our COVID numbers were 67 this week, up from 42 the previous week, so that's a pretty big jump. The positivity rating was 4.93. It's only up from 4.9, so that kind of lags because we do the numbers every week and the positivities every 14 days. So, I'm sure next week's positivity rating will be significantly higher. Plymouth County is up to 8.19, up from 7.7, and the state's at 5.77, up from 5.17. So, those numbers continue to go up. We are seeing a significant increase. If you've been watching the news, obviously, the Omnicrom variant is here. Preliminary indications are it is significantly more transmissible than the Delta variant. It is now considered the predominant variant of COVID in the country. The good news is, again, very preliminarily, it is milder than the Delta variant, and Moderna has announced that their booster is effective against the Omnicrom variant. According to the governor today, 97% of people who have been vaccinated or boosted who have a breakthrough case do not require hospitalization, medical treatment, and experience mild symptoms. So, if you haven't been vaccinated, the vaccines do work against the Omnicrom variant. Boosters are available. If you are over 18, you can get a Moderna booster. If you are over 16, you can get a Pfizer booster. So, please, they're easy to get. Marshfield Fairgrounds is now actually taking drive-ups, so you don't necessarily have to have an appointment there. You can just get out when they're open, drive up. They have both Pfizer and Moderna available, so you can get your booster there. Six months after you got your second dose, you are eligible for your booster. The governor issued some new guidance today in response to Omnicrom and the rising COVID numbers. The State Department of Public Health now advises that all residents, regardless of vaccination status, wear a mask or face covering when indoors. The DPH particularly urges this recommendation if you have a weakened immune system or if you are at increased risk for severe disease because of your age or underlying medical condition or if someone in your household has one of those conditions or is unvaccinated. In addition, as of 12/27, all hospitals in the Commonwealth have been directed to postpone or cancel all non-essential elective procedures likely to result in inpatient admission in order to maintain and increase inpatient capacity. So, if you have an operation scheduled to have your hip or knee done in January, most likely that will be postponed. So, that's it for the COVID numbers. I know the news that everybody's waiting for, for tonight, what the transfer station hours will be this weekend. We've received several calls. So, the transfer station will be open Friday, 12/24 until noon time. We will close at noon time on Friday. We will be closed 12/25 on Christmas Day. We apologize for the inconvenience, but we will be open normal hours on Sunday, 12/26. Next week, for New Year's, we will be open normal hours on Friday, closed on New Year's Day, 1/1, and open regular normal hours on Sunday, 1/2. So, the only real change is we'll be closed on the Saturdays and a half day on Friday of this week. Willows Walk Clubhouse is ongoing. The two holdups right now in the main sense, we are waiting on the walk-in freezer, which has been delayed, the installation of the walk-in freezer and the flooring. The subflooring is scheduled to be installed beginning on 12/29. Once the subflooring is in, the final flooring will go in. That's really the last big item that we have to get done. As we reported, the last meeting, the RFP is out. It is due back 12, sorry, 1/18. If anybody interested in running the concession at the golf course, once we get those done, we're really expecting to be ready to be open and have people eating and playing golf there, starting in March. On the same vein, golfing is done for the season. This week, the crew are doing maintenance and work on the course. As of this Friday, the 24th, the course will then be open to walkers for the winter, people walking, dog walking, sledding. For me, and we are once again looking forward to sharing our beautiful course with the local residents of Situate for walking, sledding, and other winter activities. We ask that you please have your dogs on a leash at all times. Avoid walking over any greens or sand traps, and most importantly, pick up after your dogs while you're walking. So, that will be starting on the 24th. The golf course will be available to walkers as we are every winter, and that is what I have for my update for today.
So, Jim, about the dog walking and pick up after your dog, will there be at least three trash cans? These are the important things in life.
Your trash cans last year, we'll put them back again this year, yep.
All right. And is it possible, do you have a sign that is, states the rules for dog walking? The reason I ask is because, you know, one of the things that could be put on the sign is please make sure your dog is leashed, you know, just the rules. And then, if the sign could say, and there are trash cans at the first hole, the ninth hole, the 18th, whatever, wherever you think it's best to put them. But I think if people know that there is a trash can coming, that they're approaching one, they're much less likely to just do what they shouldn't do and leave their plastic bags all over the place.
There's been a sign in the past, but we'll make sure it's up there.
Yeah, all right. Any other questions or anyone has any important issues like trash cans of the golf course?
I have just one question.
Yes.
You said there's a delay in the freezer for Willows Walk. Have you had any other supply delays that you know of?
We have, most of those have already been in.
That's great.
So, the last one, I think we have all the other kitchen equipment at this point.
Yes.
So, the real big delay is the installation of the walk-in freezer.
Terrific, thank you.
That was lucky.
Yeah.
Tony?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Onto the next item, which is a donation of 13 flags to the Harbor Masters Office. Is someone here to? No. Okay. So, all right. I didn't think I was going to have to do this, let me. It's on page four. So, what I have here is a very kind donation from Tricia Perry to the town of Situate, to the Harbor Masters Office specifically, of a donation of 13 flags. And the 13 flags represent the 13 original colonies. And she had talked to Lorraine about the possibility of making a memorial donation to the town in the memory of her parents, who are Mr. and Patricia and Edward G. Malone. They formerly resided at 135 Oceanside Drive, and they truly loved everything about Situate. To honor their memory, a donation of the flags has been made to the Situate Harbor Masters Office. She did attach invoices because they need, we need to have a monetary figure in order to formally accept the donation. I want to thank the family very much. It was very kind. I know that we are always in need of new flags. They wear out rather quickly. So, do I hear a motion to accept the donation?
Sure. Move that the Select Board accept the donation to the Harbor Master from Tricia Perry of 13 American flags, one for each of the original colonies in memory of her parents, M. Patricia and Edward G. Malone.
Second? Seconded by Ms. Canfield. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Four, nothing, motion carries. Thank you very much. Very nice. The next item is to discuss vote, Marina Fuel Storage License Amendment for the purchase of Millworf and Situate Harbor Marinas to the new owner. Al Elliott I saw come in, he's our deputy fire chief, and Jason Dally, Director of Marina Operations is, I know, would you like to come up? Thank you, gentlemen.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, Jason.
Very good. So, I'm not sure that everyone knows this, but the Situate Marina and the Cole Parkway Marina.
Millworf, yes.
Yeah, Millworf.
Yep.
Had been purchased by a new company.
Correct.
And you're here representing the new company? Are you the new company or is there representative?
No, I'm just representative.
Okay.
So, the new company is called TPG Hotels and Resorts and Marinas. We're based out of Rhode Island, Cranston, Rhode Island. It's a second-generation hotel and commercial real estate management company. They're branching out into marina space. I was hired to run the marinas for them, so I've only been with them for about three months. So, I came on board like about two weeks before the sales were happening. So, that's basically, in a nutshell, who TPG is. They've owned and managed over 200 hotels, all different brands, Marriott, Hiltons, and now they're kind of looking more to do more boutique and independent hotels, and now the marinas.
Do they have experience in operating marinas in particular?
That's kind of why they brought me in.
Okay.
So, I've been, myself, I, my former employer was Suntech's Marinas. They owned, when I left, they were at 32 marinas. I was Northeast Regional VP for Suntech's for two and a half years, and all in all, I've been in the marine industry for 30 years.
Very good. Thank you for coming. Chief, would you like to tell us about the transfer of the licenses?
Sure, sure, I'd be pleased to. The Fire Department's been dealing with Michelle Joyell. She's the license administrator for, I believe, it's your parent company. The Porcaciotti Company.
The Porcaciotti Company is the parent company, and Michelle is our, she does all our licensing, even down to registering cars and trailers and boats. So, she does anything that resolves, requires permitting or licensing.
We've been working with the town administrator's office and the town clerk to make sure that the licenses get transferred properly, that they know that they have to, that they have to register every year with the town clerk's office. We're involved with the permitting of the storage for the two properties at 48 Jericho Road and 25 Millworf Plaza, and so they also have to apply for a permit from the state, Marine Fueling Permit. We have to review that and sign that in the issue conditions. We've done that, and so they need that license from the state. They need, they need to permit the storage of the diesel fuel, the gasoline, and also the oxyacetylene setups for hot works and welding. And the Fire Department does that annually. We also do an inspection annually to make sure, you know, everything's safe, the signage is correct, the hoses are in good shape, the shut-offs are where they're supposed to be, the extinguishers and all that, that sorts of thing, the electrical connections and all that. This year, we permitted them, Captain McGowan met Jason down there on December 15. There's only so much of an, it was a cursory inspection because obviously it's not boating season. So, what we did was we issued the permits for six months. They'll expire at the end of May, and we'll re-permit them and keep them on a schedule so that we can get down there and do the inspections during boating season. And so, the license for the property go, the license goes with the property. So, all they're doing is transferring the ownership of the property, and so the license is going to reflect the new ownership. The reason that they have to register every year is because we need to make sure that it's still in operation. If it ceases being in operation for a certain period of time, then they have to remove all the storage equipment and all that. And also, we want to make sure that the responsible party is registered every year so we know who to deal, who we're dealing with. And so, that's essentially it in a nutshell. And so, we'll continue to work with them, but it's been a good relationship so far. And I wish them a lot of luck down there.
Questions? Yes, Ms. Canfield?
Could you just walk us through the protocol for training your dockhands?
As far as emergency procedure?
For fire safety and all that.
Yeah, I mean, for, under normal circumstances, prior to being with TPG, I always conducted training at the beginning of the year when we hired the dockhands. Basically, they have to understand, first of all, that we don't fuel the customer's boat. We ask them what product they want, hand that to them, because, you know, the customer knows the boat, and we don't know exactly where all the fuel fills are, because I've seen people put fuel in water tanks, in holding tanks, in fishing rod holders. And then, we also have signage that reflects on what procedures the customers need to do. So, the dockhands will understand that, make sure that all cabinways are closed, blowers are on, engines are off, no smoking. And then, in the unfortunate situation, if there is a fire, make sure that, you know, get everybody off the boat quickly, and then find the fuel stop, shove that off, call the Fire Department before you try to do anything. There's been debate between get the boat away from the dock or not. That's just kind of, I like to work with the local, you know, municipalities to see what they prefer. I mean, this harbor is very tight, so I really don't think that having a boat that's ablaze floating free be, you know, out there. And I have seen, and I have run docks where we haven't had anything, and we've had trained the kids to untie the boat and push it off the dock. But here, I don't think we have the room for that.
Typically, it's the best fighting practice is not to let the burning boat float free. You have to secure it or tow it somewhere. One of the most important provisions we're going to enforce with all the marinas is that when the boat's fueling, no one's on the boat. We've learned from past experience that that could be disastrous, and so, and so that's going to be one of our provisions. And the signage will be there about no smoking, and most importantly, also, the people who are going to be fueling the boats are trained in where the shut-offs are and how to use fire extinguishers and have the proper equipment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Vignani?
No, I think Ms. Canfield was alluding to the fact that we had an incident.
No, I'm very aware that at Situate Harbor, that new fuel dock is, they are new because of a fire that recently happened.
So, because of the smart training and the quick thinking of the high school, right?
Yeah.
You know, to shut it off, you really, you know, averted a disaster, so just do whatever they did to make sure.
I just have one question. Mr. Dally, what is your experience as a Director of Marina Operations? What marinas have you worked in on the East Coast or West Coast? What's your history?
The biggest marina that I worked at, I was general manager and I was regional manager over it, was Liberty Landing in New York Harbor, 500 slip marina. I was pumping almost 2 million gallons of fuel there. I had a staff of 38. When I left Suntech's, I was overseeing 12 properties from New Jersey, Virginia, Maryland, two properties in Iowa, three properties in Kentucky, and two properties in Tennessee.
Great, thank you. And are, will you be local?
I will not. We will have general manager local, and, you know, I'll be up here, you know, probably once a month.
Gotcha, okay.
All right. Do I hear a motion?
Sure, there are a couple of them. So, move that the Select Board vote to approve a fuel storage license for 7,000 gallons of gasoline and 3,000 gallons of diesel for the property located at 25 Millworf Plaza to the new landowner, TPG Marine Marinas, Millworf LLC of Cranston, Rhode Island, subject to the requirements of the Town of Situate by law 32010, Mass. General Law, Chapter 148, Paragraph 13, and any and all conditions set forth by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security and the Department of Fire Services.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Vignani. All in favor? Aye. Four, zero, motion carries.
And then, there's a second.
Yes.
Move that the Select Board vote to approve a fuel storage license for 4,000 gallons of gasoline and 3,000 gallons of diesel for the property located at 48 Jericho Road for the new landowner, TPG Situate Harbor Marina LLC of Cranston, Rhode Island, subject to the requirements of the Town of Situate by law 32010, Mass. General Law, Chapter 148, Paragraph 13, and any and all conditions set forth by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Department of Fire Services.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, zero, motion carries. Thank you very much for coming in. Welcome to Situate.
Thank you.
So, I'm looking for Mr. Branton, but I'm not sure I see him. Mr. Cafferty, are you going to?
Sure.
Help us through this? Before we start, this is about upgrading the sewer treatment plant. These were all voted on at town meeting, correct?
Correct. This has been an ongoing program for probably about the past six years of upgrading the SCADA system and SCADA software in the treatment plant so that we can connect and talk to everything and update it. We've come a long way.
Yep, that's great.
Basically, Will's running a little behind, but he was going to be here, so it's just, as I said, the continuation of the major project to get the wastewater treatment plant up to speed with SCADA so that we can do operations from the control center.
And this is a Weston and Sampson contract?
Weston and Sampson won the original RFP. When we presented the original RFP, original contract, we knew it was going to be an extension, add-on after add-on after add-on. So, it would keep the same company, same software, and same hardware, so it wouldn't be mix and match, so everything would be usable.
All right. And the total is $177,000 for all of the various components?
Correct.
Does the board have any questions?
I just have one. Is phase four the last phase? Are we coming to the end?
We've got a couple more phases, and Will could tell you the additional phases. I think there's at least, there's probably three more phases.
To keep going, okay.
To keep going. And things keep updating as it goes. And this, we've been working with IT quite a bit on this so that we have, so we don't have access to areas that can be tapped into, you know, through cybersecurity to protect it. So, so far, that's, they've been doing a pretty good job with that.
Just a quick question?
Yes.
Kevin, is Weston and Sampson doing the study or are they actually doing the work that's stated in there?
They're doing the work.
So, they're going to come in and they're going to upgrade the software?
They upgrade the software and they also upgrade the hardware. They also have, they're not only an engineering firm, they also have a firm that does the physical work, too. They'll also maintain your sewer treatment plants and different projects like that. A lot of, a lot of those companies do.
Okay, so.
And they hire subcontractors also to do, you know, specialty work and everything else.
Great, so this isn't just a study, this is actual work?
This is actual work. When you go into the compressor buildings, I believe, some of the, I'm not even, I'm going to murder some of the equipment, but they remove the equipment and they put the proper stuff in.
Well, this is good insurance against possible failures and being able to keep on top. Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve a Weston and Sampson SCADA improvements contract, 21-SS-48, in the amount of $177,000.
Second? Seconded by Ms. Canfield. All in favor? Aye. Four, zero, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kevin? Now, we have a presentation update, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. Tom Secor, Chair. I know you're on the agenda for 7:10, but we're ahead of schedule. How lucky are we?
Early in, early out.
Nice meeting you in person. We're a COVID committee, so, yeah, I haven't met Angela, but several members of the committee I haven't met in person yet.
That's been an interesting experience, hasn't it? We've had all these committees meeting, almost all virtually, and never having met each other in person, so.
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little odd.
I know you've been a very active committee, and.
We're trying to be.
Thank Mark, Karen, for being the select liaison.
No, thank me, thank these people who are doing all the work.
Thank you very much. If you could introduce yourselves just for the audience.
Tom Secor, Chair of the Committee.
Angela Dre, Coach, Chair.
Bob Clark, I'm the Human Resources Director, I'm also a member of the committee.
Very good, thank you. So, would you like to tell us what you've been up to?
Sure. Are you going to scan through this, or do you want to, do you guys have copies of what we're going to?
We have copies. Do we have someone to put it up?
It doesn't have to be, I mean.
Okay, yeah, we have copies.
Yeah, we're looking at it, but.
It's up to you.
I have to put it over there, and all I have is a PDF as part of my, or as a presentation.
Yeah, it's okay. I mean.
We can always post it afterwards.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
I think that's a good idea, and honestly, once a presentation goes up, people start reading it word for word for you.
Yeah, and I don't really want that anyway.
No, so.
Yeah, so, the, it's been, it's been a while since we were in front of you. I think we were in front of you in April, and hopefully, the goal of our committee is going forward certainly to get in front of you every, every quarter with recommendations. But it's taken us a while to, you know, to work together and work through different opportunities and ideas and so forth and progress them through the, through the funnel, so to speak. So, our intent tonight is certainly not to go through 20 slides on the slide deck in 15 minutes, because that just won't work. So, I will go through the handful of slides upfront pretty quickly and try, the meat of the presentation are a couple of core recommendations that we want to make to the Select Board. So, what we put together in the deck itself is just a little background, because again, we haven't been in front of you in quite a while. So, everything from the charge that we were initially given, which really focuses, again, on the whole approach of review, report, recommend. And Ms. Canfield, you attended one of our meetings. After our initial presentation, you kind of drilled that home, so hopefully, we've followed your lead. In the deck itself, there are our goals, which we have to go back to our goals, okay? Regardless of whatever the opportunity is that anyone on the committee or the town brings to us to try to work through, we need to make sure that anything that progresses in front of you marries up to, to one of those goals. So, we put that in the presentation, just a reminder of who our committee members are. We have had a bit of attrition and turnover, and we've been able to fill those slots very quickly, which has been tremendous. So, it's great that if we do have an opening, multiple people come forward and interview for those slots. So, we're grateful to the town for that. Some of the, some of the general updates, when we first came in, we spent a lot of time coming up with a list of questions, okay, for the town departments, because ultimately, that was one of the focuses that, in a big part of the charge that you gave us, to, you know, look at the town departments, what can we recommend for the town of Situate as it relates to diversity, equity, and inclusion matters. So, that's in the appendix. We whittled probably 50 questions down to seven core questions, issued them to 22 town departments, and had 100% participation from those departments, which was fantastic. Our initial three kind of priority areas were the Situate Police Department, DPW, and then we kind of combined Board of Health, Social Services, and FACS, maybe the Veterans Committee as well. I always forget them, I apologize. And started to put, you know, our ideas into, we have a pretty massive workbook that we use, this Excel workbook, we use Slack for communication amongst the committee, and what we try to do is say, okay, it starts as an opportunity, goes to an in-flight project, and then to a recommendation. And then, we also archive a whole bunch of stuff that we say, that's not really our charge, let's park it over here, maybe there's other people in the town that can address it. Okay? So, that's, that's the quick overview. I'm going to skip through that and get right to our recommendations. So, there's, there's two recommendations that we want to make tonight at a very high level. The first one is gender-neutral bathrooms in all-town buildings. And then, the second piece is a commitment statement, which is also, in some areas, referred to as a safe space, secure space, brave space, there's a lot of different names for it. So, should I stop for questions now? Any questions on the, on the overview I just gave, or do you want me to launch right into the recommendations?
No, I have no question. I'll defer to that.
I just want to commend, I mean, looking through all the stuff, and we'll get into the, into the details, but, I mean, exactly what the charge is, just look at stuff, analyze it, come up with stuff that we can then vet. I'm excited, I'm reading through the backup package, I'm very excited about the work you guys have done, and appreciate the diligence in which you have done it, so, thank you for that, and.
Sure.
We'll get into the specifics.
Yeah, it's been a, it's been a very collaborative effort, certainly, both in terms of, we have eight voting members. We have Bob Clark, who's not a voting member, but he's involved with everything. Jamil Adams is not even really an official member. He attends every meeting, and he's fantastic, so, and he doesn't live in Situate, right? So, and he's been, he's just been a godsend, he's been.
Perhaps you could tell the audience who that is, because not everyone, if you're Because not everyone, if you're not involved in the schools, you don't necessarily know who he is.
That's a good point. So he's the Director of Diversity Equity Inclusion for Situate Public Schools. So he was brought on by Superintendent Burkhead. I forget exactly when he was hired. In the last year.
Within the last year, yeah.
Yeah, and to say he hit the ground running is an understatement.
He's very energetic.
Very energetic, and he has great style.
Yes.
And I could learn from him in that thing. So, yeah. Anyways, I wouldn't look good with an orange fedora.
Sure you would.
I also want to say, Bob is a wonderful non-voting member. As a liaison, he stays and he provides us wonderful, you know, feedback. And I'm thinking of, and Mara as well. But what's nice about the Committee is, you know, like Tom said, we have eight voting members, but the non-voting members and liaisons. You know, Jamil's wonderful because, you know, this is, we're all volunteers, so we're not expertise, experts in this field. We bring our own, you know, life experiences and what we want for our community. Jamil is more of an expert in this field. So it's wonderful having him as a liaison. He really adds a lot. We've had wonderful conversations. Like Tom says, we want to, you know, come to you at least quarterly with recommendations. But, you know, we, we want to do a good job. We want to come prepared. So what we're presenting to you, you understand why we're presenting it to you. So I just want to thank the liaisons.
Well, it's great to hear you getting cooperation.
We are.
It's really key to your success, I would think.
No doubt.
Yeah.
No doubt. So...
Just give a shout out that Ruth, another Committee member, has joined you.
Hi Ruth.
Our fearless secretary. The best minutes you'll ever see. So, and they're all posted, if you want to take a look. So, okay, great. So, so launching right into the first recommendation. So, and as, as we've all said, it's been a huge collaborative effort. I mean, this one, we've all had input on all of the opportunities. Kate Swope, who couldn't be here tonight, has been massively important with this one. Bob, Mara, people taking field trips to the various town buildings. I think the entire Committee has walked around the library looking to solve, like, one specific issue, for example. You know, why do they matter? And I'm glad you said, yeah, we're not all experts in this field, but we're all, we're all learning, okay? They matter for a variety of, of reasons. Not just for transgender, gender non-conforming people, people with disabilities, parents with children. Everyone. There was, there was a note, something that I read, that I was like, yeah, I mean, how many times have we waited in line for a particular bathroom while the other one sat empty for 20 minutes?
And we know what you're talking about.
Everyone.
We know you've experienced that, Tom.
Go to Gillette Stadium, right?
Exactly. Thank you. Thank you. Concerts, you name it. So what is the, what is the current status in the town buildings? So we tried to give some, some research there for people that don't know. We worked with Kevin Kelly, Director of Facilities. Bob did a lot of this work. Seventeen town buildings. Twelve buildings were, I would just call layups, right? So just, they just need proper signage, okay? And the signs, I think, are fairly inexpensive. And there's, there's a handful that need some work. And so we, we tried to document that. We've got, we've got more, you know, behind this for what's needed. Like I mentioned, the library, working with them. There's, there were some bathrooms that were kind of out of the way, behind a locked door, in unattended hallways. We've got some solutions there that we could get into. But I think, when you boil it down, I think we're good 15 out of 17 buildings. I think the two that are still, we may not have a out-of-the-box solution right now are the Maritime Center and Widows Walk that have two multi-stall bathrooms, no place for a single stall bathroom. So, okay? So the, so the recommendation itself, without burying the lead too much here, is to adopt gender-neutral bathrooms in Situate town buildings where feasible. So again, 15 out of the 17 are pretty much covered. Need signage. We'll need to install that signage. In a few cases, there are some, for, for, you know, I'll say minor modifications. I'm not a builder, so I don't really know what minor means. We'll have to assess that. There's been some work done by Bob and Kevin and so forth to modify as needed to fit the recommendation. And then, an important piece is ensuring new construction. So any new town buildings should have this type of, I mean, if anyone's walked around the New Gates School, right? There's gender-neutral bathrooms all over the place. It's fantastic. And it's, there, there's a lot of kids that identify and appreciate that. So, any other notes you want to add to this one, or...
No, I think, I think you covered it.
Any questions from the board about this particular recommendation, or...
I just want to add that, you know, what this Committee has done really well is taken all of this, all this information, and a ton of requests thrown at them, and said, what can we impact immediately, most quickly, and really start to move forward? So this was, like, you know, like Tom said, a little bit of a layup, but not really, because there are some, some areas where we, we're going to have to work with. Probably, you know, obviously Jim and Nancy and Capitol identify if there's any way we can modify. We may not be able to modify the Maritime and Widows Walk, right? But too bad, because we just renovated Widows Walk. Had it been on our radar 18 months ago, right? We, we could have addressed it then. So timing isn't always perfect. But they've done a really, really great job just looking at those areas where we could make an immediate impact.
Just want to piggyback on something Ms. Current just said, is one of the goals for us is to be mindful of when we're doing, because we, you know, whatever it is we're doing, and this is exactly the sort that illuminates something, and it's like, if you're going to build another building, we're going to come and say, what are we not forget, thinking about?
Right.
So, you know, the, the long-term impact is even with, with the short-term ripples, really is going to make an impact. So I'm, I'm excited about that because that's exactly what we wanted to do. So, I, I think, I really appreciate that you pointed out that gender-neutral bathrooms serve so much of the community.
Right.
You know, I just thought, I, I think when these slides come out, people should take a look because it really just is like...
And we even picked out the signs.
I did see the sign. I'm glad it's not the little one.
Well, I mean, believe it or not...
There was a lot of debate.
Well, no, I mean, there was some expertise that went into this. I mean, not, not my own, but in some reasoning literally behind the picture, okay? It's really just focusing on simplicity and function. That's it.
And non-English speaking can recognize what it means.
Of course. Of course.
And one of the things I would say is that, you know, there are folks on the Committee that are very active, active in their own private lives, in their own corporations, on DEI initiatives. So they're bringing a lot of those learnings to the Committee as well, which is helping us with some of the vernacular and the reasons behind it. So, it is, it is a really nice mix of people on the group.
As far as the, the, the numbers to this, we haven't gotten that far. First is decide, do we like this? And then we go and figure out, you know, how much do the signs cost and all that stuff? And where, how we're going to pay for it if we approve it?
I don't think the signs are that expensive. Start doing that out of our...
Facilities.
Facilities budget, yeah. I don't think they're that expensive. If the board agrees with these signs, just start having Kevin order some, and we'll just kind of do it as we go along.
I talked to Kevin earlier, Kevin Kelly, earlier today, and he said some of the renovations at, particularly the, the Jericho Road facility, I forget what that's called, but he said that's, that's short money. So he felt he could sort of handle that. I think some of the renovations that potentially would have to occur at the Harbor Massacre Building are much more significant, to the point where we have to really question, you know, what we can do there or not. So, I mean, I think that's going to take a fair moment for the investigation before we know.
And that building has other issues that we want to address, so that could be part of the whole conversation.
Same with the Maritime Center. It'll be really difficult to try to figure that one out. I looked at the signs of 2020 and 30, 30 bucks a piece, they aren't that expensive, so... That's an easy one. We can start doing that. If the board agrees with doing it and likes the sign that they recommended, then we'll just tell Kevin to buy some. And as, as they said, a lot of them are easy. The EOC is easy. You just take the existing signs off, put the new signs up. There's a bunch of those that we can get.
Probably a small, not huge, public education campaign could be done around this as well. That the, you know, way to give the Committee some visibility within the community and also a concrete action that's being taken and to avoid any sort of misunderstanding that might result if all of a sudden this happens and no one's been told about it. So, I'm looking at my friend Ruth back there, perhaps a little story in the Mariner.
It's a great idea.
So, does anyone else have any questions or comments?
I guess I'll ask a real simple question. Is the, is the idea of the gender-neutral bathroom to be a single stall? So you couldn't just go to Widows Walk and make both double-stall ones gender-neutral?
I think it's a single-stall idea.
Is that, is that the concept?
As simple as that. If the facility had a single-stall bathroom, we were able to convert it. You know, and the multi-stall bathrooms are difficult to do that, I thought this one.
Okay, so if there's two single-stall places, you'd make them both gender-neutral?
Right.
And if there's not, then you would build a single-stall facility and...
Well, like here, we have the one bathroom that's a single, that'll become the gender-neutral bathroom.
Yep.
That's the idea.
Any questions from anyone in the audience? No? All right. Next?
Okay.
Our second recommendation is for the Select Board to establish a commitment statement. In the background on a commitment statement, it's, it's a statement that a Committee or Board will make to encourage participation for all the residents and community members. And especially those that have felt that they haven't had a voice. You know, and also to remind everyone when they participate in these meetings or Committees to be respectful of one another, even if they disagree. It's also a reminder that the Situate Committee and Board support the Select Board's DEI statement made in October of 2020 to be inclusive, welcoming, and embrace diversity. So the recommendation that we have is, one, for the Select Board to adopt their own commitment statement or use one that we have provided for you. Two is for the statement to be read at the beginning of every meeting. Also, again, it's a reminder for the participants. And three, that the Select Board also recommends other town boards and Committees to establish their own commitment statement to be read at the beginning of their meetings. The last was that the commitment statement, Select Board's commitment statement would be posted on the appropriate town website and also be printed in the annual town meeting handbook, I'm sorry. And I think in, in the deck, you have the commitment statement that we have drafted. If anyone had any questions on it. Again, the purpose of it is to just, you know, have a statement that, you know, all voices are welcomed, be respectful. We promote inclusivity and participation for everyone.
The, the only thing I'll add is that, so we've gone through, how many of our own? Four or five, probably?
Stages, yeah.
Yeah, over the last year. And we've, we've tweaked it and continued to tweak it. And we've had healthy disagreements that filled like two pages of minutes in Ruth's notes, okay? So, and everyone's bringing a lot of different things to the table with this. Jamil, Angela, a whole number of people, right? So there's been, again, there's been a lot that's gone into, into this. The statement that's in the deck that we're recommending for the Select Board isn't necessarily the one that we're going to use, and that's okay. So I just wanted to make that distinction.
Yeah, because in our, in our Committee, it's a DI Committee. You know, we're talking about topics that, you know, could be, you know, that's more sensitive. So our statement may be a little bit more direct as far as, you know, dealing with those topics, which for a Select Board meeting, you may not, you wouldn't necessarily need to get into that type of wording in your statement. So every Committee can develop their own. And again, the, you know, like Tom said, we had a lot of great conversations. Jamil was wonderful because I think some of us, you know, we, we know of a term used now and we interpret it differently. So Jamil's recommendation was throw out the terms and make a statement that works for Situate and makes a, make a statement that works for you. And I thought that was wonderful advice. So we don't get hung up on terminology that might change, you know, in a few months. The, the, the important thing is for people to feel welcomed and heard and for the Board to promote that.
Well, I will say that I saw one of the iterations and it was really long. And I was shaking my head, saying, this is too long, this is too long.
There were some long ones, yeah.
And then I watched one of the meetings where you were having a very frank discussion about terms and terminology. What does safe space mean? What is... And that was very educational for me. And so now that I'm looking at this one, I appreciate its brevity. And I appreciate the fact that it's promoting respect. Because one of the things that happens, especially in civic life, sometimes people aren't very respectful of each other. And so I personally, as the Chair of this Board and as a Board Member, I appreciate when people respect each other and they don't get angry with each other. They agree to disagree. And anything we can do to promote that, and especially to encourage people who normally wouldn't think that they could come into a meeting like this and say something.
Right.
We, we have to hear all the voices in town, not just the loudest ones. We all hear the loud ones. But the, the people who feel a little intimidated, I would hope the more we talk about this and the more we say it, people who might not consider themselves disadvantaged in any way, they might feel timid as well. So I appreciate the fact that it's a very broad statement encouraging respect. So I'm, was happy to see it. Other comments from the Board?
Billy, no, I agree with everything Ms. Current just said. One thing that I, I serve on a Board that in every conference room you go into in the facility, when we actually went into Facilities and had conferences, there's, there's statement, which is similar to this, on a poster on the wall. And I have come to really love that because, yes, you can say it at the beginning, but maybe not everyone's here, whatever. When you're sitting there and you're not really interested in the conversation, you're just looking around, it's right there. So should the Board feel that this is something that makes sense for the community, I would suggest that we think about posting, and it was a lovely, attractive poster. And I would encourage other public spaces where people meet, we could do the same.
Love it.
I was thinking the same thing, you know, before you walk in the door, these are the expectations.
Yeah.
And this, you know, when I read this, it really, except for four words, it really is just common sense, you know, it should be, it should be said all the time. I mean, the fact that we're, we're saying regardless of your situation, if you're in my knowledge, you know, that you should, you should feel comfortable. But the rest of it is just what we, what we preach at every, don't preach, but what we expect at every meeting, so...
And don't always get it.
Occasionally, it's us.
Occasionally, it's us.
So, so I, I like it, and I like the idea of posting it and really having people look at it when they walk in the room. The other thing that it likened to me was, Tom, you know, we've been doing many sporting events for our kids, and they read something before every game. You know, they read that they expect there to be sportsmanship and they expect people to act in a certain behavior. And this is really no different than that. So, I think it's a great idea for, for, for everybody in town, so...
If the Board adopts it, I am not putting up a poster. We've actually spent a little money fixing this room up, so we will order a nice sign to put up.
Well, we could do a nice, yes, a nice sheet.
It's not going to be a poster.
And a nice little framed...
If you've seen my handwriting, you'll be able to read it anyways, so...
Nice framed statement.
Get a nice statement and put it up in here that people can see, but when I could just...
We appreciate you protecting the aesthetics of the space.
Do we have to vote to adopt it? Or is our conversation tonight, you know, supporting it sufficient?
You don't have to. I think it'd be better if you voted actually both of them.
Yeah, okay.
On the gender-neutral bathrooms and the, to adopt the statement from the DEI. I think that just carries more weight.
I agree. Mara?
No, it's, that's... No, it's, that's, it's great for me because I think if we do vote to support it and adopt it, it also can disseminate to all the committees as well and get it to all their chairs. So they also present it at the beginning of their next meeting or meetings starting in Janu-, you know, whatever. January may be giving time to, to get the information.
Yeah, that's certainly the idea, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, great. There was so much discussion and they were very careful at making this as broad, but also, you know, meeting their goal, right? To help those who do feel marginalized and in minorities in our town, to help them feel better to come forward. So we can't forget that not everybody is comfortable as the rest of us sometimes.
Well, honestly, when I look at the statement, I think it's, it's kind of an all-purpose statement. It's, could be that the Situit Advisory Committee is committed to providing an environment of.
Sure.
You know, I mean, I, I would want to encourage people, other committees, to adhere as closely to this as possible so that we don't have, you know, people kind of going off on their own.
Can I read it out loud?
Yes.
For our viewing audience, which is so, so wide and vast. The suggested commitment from the DEI committee is that the Situit Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is a disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. And we're very fortunate to have, you know, a very tenured English teacher on our, our committee as well to make sure our grammar is correct.
Trust me, I know. We all know.
So that was it, yeah.
I think that's, I think it's great.
The one thing that I think maybe missing is some comment on that we have to follow, you know, our municipal protocol. You know, that there's, there's also more than just a respect aspect, but there's rules that are different in this environment than in other environments. I'm, I'm having.
Like Robert's Rules of Orders?
Yes, you know, something along those lines and just bylaws and protocol.
There was a lot of discussion about what do you do, what happens when, like, did they, there is a sentence in here as to what happens when somebody doesn't, is not respectful or does not abide by the rules that we kind of set forth to manage meetings and we just kind of thought.
A few months ago, it was much more specific, yes.
Right, right. And just thought, you know, look, there are other rules to your point. Robert's rules that if things get out of order, that's up to the chair also to manage, right?
Right.
Right.
I guess my point is maybe we don't vote it tonight, this one tonight, and give us, you know, a gap between.
A minute to see if you want to add any of that?
Although I love it. I think, I love the simplicity of it and I love the state, you know, it's a strong statement. That's, no one's going to stop reading it, you know, it's pretty simple and short and to the point.
What about the signs? Do we want to vote to adopt these changes or any additional research needed before we do that?
I don't, I don't think so. What they have here and what the board could vote would be, one, to adopt gender neutral bathrooms in Situit Town buildings where feasible. Install appropriate signage and modify facilities as needed per recommendation. And then ensure new construction makes the appropriate accommodations per recommendation. So basically it just says that we're going to put up new signs in places where we can make changes. We'll make changes. Everything else is either going to have to go to a capital further down the line or when we do modifications or new facilities. And that's something that we probably would just have to do in our audience.
Can we be so bold as to put that those changes that are feasible be made in the next, you know, within the next fiscal year during budgetary planning, just so it's not hanging out there and it takes us five years to get this done?
I mean, I wouldn't want to say that because if you talk in the Maritime Center, there's nothing on the Maritime Center.
No, no, no. I mean those that have already been identified where it can be done, where it's feasible. I, I understand the Maritime Center and the Harbor Master, that's quite, I wouldn't want to put a timeframe on that yet.
I just, I think just, so we're feasible, the ones we can knock off. I mean, I don't want to say yes because I have a facilities department of three people and if something happens over there, then nothing's getting done over there. So I, I just wouldn't want to put a timeline up. But the signs and stuff, those are all easy. I'd have to look at what they're recommending for the library. I think there's something about a buzzer. So I'll have to talk to Jesse and the staff there and see what works for them. But then you get into the Maritime Center, that's a whole, whole different ball of wax.
We did talk to Jesse. She was part of that solution with Bob and Kevin Kelly, so that's more of a cost, I think, right? Issue and how it would work. So the issue is that the, the most accessible single bathrooms are backed by the conference rooms and those doors are always locked. So we don't want to have somebody who is sensitive to their, their, their gender, whatever we want, what do I want to say? I can't even, the identity, thank you, and I'm on the committee and I can't even get the word out, to have to go and ask to open up the bathroom, right? So we want the door to be open, but there are also security concerns. So we thought if there can be a light that, that comes on or something that lets the staff know underneath that somebody is in there, that's all. They're worried about somebody having, you know, an emergency or a situation that can't be attended to because they don't know they're back there, because it's, they're not used all the time, right? So we're looking for a sort of a security system, if you will, that is not intrusive that you can, that the staff knows that somebody's there. Does that make sense?
But leave it, but leave it open.
But leave it open, right. So folks don't have to come ask to go use the bathroom. That's the whole point.
I think that's a problem for everyone, you know, I mean.
Where these particular bathrooms are, you would be having access to a portion of the building that is not under the eyes of people in the library.
It's when you come into the building to the right.
So you could come into the library and go into that section of the library without anybody knowing you were there. So that from a security standpoint, you don't want people accessing the building that you don't know are accessing the building.
Right.
So somehow you have to combine, you have to balance that need for security with the ability for people to access it who want to access it for using other facilities or whatever that.
Yeah, no matter who you are.
Oh, yeah, it's a safety issue for everyone.
Right, yeah. But we don't want anyone to have to ask permission specifically because there are other ladies and men's rooms throughout the rest of the library that people can use. So that's the difference.
But they're not single. That's the problem.
Correct.
Got it.
That's right.
Got it. Okay. Well, just something to figure out. Yep?
Would you like a motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
I would prove that the Situit Select Board is three-part. Adopt gender neutral bathrooms in Situit Town buildings where feasible. Install appropriate signage and modify facilities as needed per recommendation. And ensure new construction makes the appropriate accommodations per recommendation.
Second. Second by Ms. Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Just one question. These signs, the board's okay with these signs? I don't need to vote, but these signs are.
They look fine to me, yeah.
And it's fine because there was no model of gender.
Yep.
Great.
And then Tony, you wanted to.
Yeah, let's talk about that next week and get Andrew's input as well and.
On the statement?
Yeah.
Okay. You guys okay with that?
Yeah. Thank you.
So I, I see you've got a few other things. If you could run through them a little quickly because we'll be running behind schedule and I want to keep us on task here.
I'll run through them super quick. There's just, you know, kind of a preview of sorts of probably the next couple of things that should be up to, to put back in front of you. So I don't want to say number one or number two, but the first is training. So mandatory DEI training curriculum for town employees. So I don't want you to think that we're going to be having people have to go through a month of training. That's not what we're talking about here, but, so it's, it's early days for us. There are a number of members of the committee and of course, Mr. Clark here, that have a lot of experience in training courses of all, of all types. And so we're, we've only had a couple of meetings. We've got a little project team put together that are running at this. We want to walk before we run and we're kicking around, potentially putting together a pilot program, maybe for a couple of committees. And that's probably what will, the recommendation will look like. Please don't quote me because we're still working on it. We're in the, certainly in the review stage. Maybe we're in the report stage because I'm talking about it, but we're not in, we're not in the recommend stage quite yet. Bob has already unearthed in, I think it was your handiwork that got Local Club U to actually add a number of DEI courses that weren't available until the last couple of weeks.
Yep.
So there's a lot of different ways that I think we'll be able to go about this that'll be cost-effective and efficient for the town. So, so in, in the deck, there's, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to go through it. I'll go on to the next one. But we articulate that there's certainly challenges with this around computer access, in-person versus virtual, the effectiveness of virtual versus in-person, et cetera, et cetera. So we fully realize that there's going to be a number of hurdles and challenges to this, so we're going to be, working through all of that. And then the second piece, I'm going to let you speak to this.
Surprise.
The second piece is we will be recommending that the board approves to adopt a Cape Verde Sister City. Tom and I met with the chair, ran in front of the existing sister cities and they were wonderful. We had a very productive meeting. They had sample of, you know, material already, like, you know, paper printed on it. So there is an interest in the community. I've spoken to many people that said they would apply to be on such a committee. Obviously, it's a committee separate from the DEI. It would go through the normal channels as the two existing committees did. But I think that's exciting for the, for the community. Looking forward to presenting that to you.
I think it's exciting for the community. It's excellent.
Yeah, it'd be great.
We just celebrated the 10th anniversary of the Souci Enbri Sister City and it was, it was wonderful. We had a Zoom commemoration and they're extremely enthusiastic on the other side of the Atlantic and I'm sure you'd find the same. So I think that's a great thing culturally for the community.
Right.
Any comments?
I just have one, just for the board. Just as we move forward in the budgeting process for FY23, I want to make sure that we're mindful that training costs money and I think this is very important, training. And so as we go through and Bob comes before us and we talk through that, I just want to make sure that we're asking, you know, what kind of DEI training we have incorporated. Because I don't think we can wait another fiscal year to start it.
Well, I would also suggest, I get so annoyed by the technology quizzes we have to take all the time that some.
That's free. It doesn't cost me.
Except my time.
It does, but it saves us money on our.
I didn't pass.
It saves us money on our cyber. Insurance?
Multiple tries.
You know, it does save us money on our cyber.
I mean, they even, they even list this one simple one, which is the unconscious bias training, which is, is, is pretty eye-opening and it's, you know, for a first level.
If, if you see, when we get to the, the next agenda item on the MOUs with AMP and TOSCA, there's specific language in there about our ability to require training. So when these are adopted, Bob and I will sit down and go through some of the courses. You know, obviously customer service training, things like that. And then there'll be conversations with the board saying, just so you know, this Friday, Town Hall's going to be closed with the public while we do a training. Bob can do training, we can, so there's training that we can do that doesn't cost us anything. And then there's training that we would do that we would bring someone in. We have a training budget. I don't think we use all of it every year. So a lot of, again, Bob is, is train the trainer. So he can do a lot of it himself and then where we need to bring someone in. And then there's other stuff that people can do themselves online. And you just have to be aware that, you know, today in your work day, someone's going to take a couple of time out, go over there and, and do their training. It gets a little more complicated when you talk about the DPW because they don't have access to computers.
Right.
But for, for most of our employees, it's something we can do and it's, it's not real expensive. It's not real expensive to do, so.
But time is money, right?
Right.
At any rate, so anybody else, anyone in the audience have anything to say? Nope?
Just to clarify what Maureen was asking, so Bob, when you come before us with your budget, it'd be good to have some idea of that, right? That we need an extra X thousand dollars for training for this. Because if we don't, I think Maureen's point is if we don't act on it, then we're not taking it seriously. And we want to make sure that we stay ahead of it.
Great. All right. Thank you so much for coming in. We really appreciate it.
It's great to see you all in person.
Yes. Thanks so much.
Much taller than I think you look on Zoom.
Yeah, I get that. Pretty sure when I sit in chair.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, guys.
Everything.
Oh, do you have the shorty?
So on to, Mr. Clark just moved to the middle there. Discuss both human resources, collective bargaining, memorandum of agreement for service employees international union, SEIU, local 888, TOSCA, and AMP bargaining units, and the approval of non-union salary classification plan.
Easy enough, right? Sure.
Tell us in English what that is.
So we have been negotiating for a successor collective bargaining agreement with our, two of our SEIU 888 unions. The two bargaining units, one is AMPs, which is administration and management professionals, and TOSCA, which is a clerical union. So we have, we have come to agreement with, with both units. We have developed an MOA, which the union has presented to the membership and has been ratified overwhelmingly, I've heard. So that's good news. So I'm here to present the MOA to the, to the Select Board for their approval. So the, again, both the units are represented by the same union. So a lot of language is common between the two contracts, the two MOAs. And to say, also, much of the language is actually sort of, you know, there's, there's a fair amount of sort of housekeeping language in there. There's a fair amount of, of just sort of us memorializing existing practices. So I wasn't going to, you know, go line by line because I don't think it'd be a good use of everyone's time. So what I preferred to do is actually just talk about what some of the common language is between the two contracts. The first and probably the most important is the wages. So we agreed to do a 2% wage increase for FY22. So this would be back to July 1st, retroactive. A 2% wage increase for FY23 and a 2.5% wage increase for FY24. In addition, in the wages, we also, both, both bargaining units and their wage scale have a provision that the top step, they can only receive that after they've been employed with the town for 20 years. And there was some resistance to that from the, from the union. So we ultimately agreed to reduce that 20 years down to 15 years. Their argument being there's very few people that actually reached that point. So in, in terms of just, I might as well, since I'm on the sort of the wages, in terms of the, the total expense of, of those two proposals. For TOSCA, the, the wage increases for FY22 is $29,737. For AMPs, the 2% wage increase retroactive is, would be, would cost $40,568. The change to the step, there's only, that actually isn't effective until next fiscal year. I think next fiscal year, an AMP will be one employee who gets that. And TOSCA, there'll be three employees who will actually get that additional step. So again, it's not, it's not huge change.
Bob, what's the percentage increase of that step?
It's, I believe it's 2.5%. Typically, the, the differences between the steps are 2.5%. We also, again, this is the sort of common language between the two MOAs. We, we agreed to add Juneteenth to the, to the list of holidays. We also said any new and newly declared state or federal holidays so that if something else occurs, it just becomes a matter of fact. We also added some language in there that if an employee is sick the day before of a holiday, this is for both bargaining units, that they actually don't get the holiday pay. So we're looking to sort of, you know, I guess discourage kind of the long weekend type of thing. Although we have exemption, exemptions for that clearly that, that the town administrator can make if it's a legitimate illness. We also have similar language that in the last three weeks of employment, if someone retires or resigns, they can again not use sick time unless it's a legitimate verified illness, so. So that's the common language between the two MOAs. There's some unique language to TOSCA that I'll reference. We did, the, the, the union made a number of requests to upgrade some positions. There were two that we agreed to. One, the assistant to the fire chief. The request was to upgrade that position, so it was the same grade as the assistant to the police chief. it was the same grade as the assistant to the police chief, and it was a logical argument, and so we ultimately looked at the, you know, what they did, and, and realized it was, it was justified. So, we agreed to that retroactive to July 1st. We also had recently created a new assistant town clerk position, um, and the senior clerk in that, in that department had been upgraded to that position, but, um, it had been graded at an A7, the union requested that it be regraded at an A8, and with those additional duties, we, we saw that as being justified. And the last change to the wage article is that, uh, there was a request to create an assessing specialist position in the assessors department. And that position, we, we saw some benefits to that, I mean, that, that position, um, would be able to actually perform a lot of the functions of the assessors, can actually go and perform assessments on housing, on houses, and that would allow us to kind of get back up to speed, I think, we've been sort of lagging a little bit for the past few years, so I think it helps with the directive of assessing to kind of get some of that work done. So, um, we will post that job and fill, and fill for that, so. One other change we had with, with Tosca is that we agreed to a health insurance opt-out plan. And so, basically, if, if an employee has, is on insurance for 12 months or more, and during open enrollment opts out of that insurance, they would receive $6,000, if it's a family plan, $3,000 if it's an individual plan. Our expense for health insurance is, is rather significant, so, um, for a family plan, if someone opted out, even with us paying them the $6,000, um, we would save $9,433 a year. For the individual plan, where, you know, the, the stipend is $3,000, we would save $5,036 a year. So, there's, there's, there's certainly a potential benefit to the town if, if, if employees take advantage of it.
Do you mean per person?
You can't be on the town's insurance at all. So, you can't be in Tosca and have a spouse that's a teacher, and you come off and go on theirs, and then you get the stipend, you cannot be covered by the town's insurance, period. We're gonna try, we, it was a program we put in when I was in Norwell, it was very successful, I talked to the treasure collector over there, they're very happy with this, think they're saving substantial amounts of money. You still have to prove that you have insurance, you can't be uninsured. So, we're, we're gonna see if it works, I think it will, I think it will save us some money.
Well, the assumption being, you would be getting on your spouse's plan.
You'd be on someone else's.
Right, right, sure, yeah. And then with, with Tosca, the last sort of more significant, um, component was, uh, there was an agreement to, um, to delete the wage reopener language that was in the existing contract. So, basically, they had, they had a clause in there that basically said, if there was another agreement with another union outside of Tosca, that was more, the wage increase was more a higher percentage than what they just negotiated, we had to come back to the table and reopen the negotiation. Um, and that's something we were never really particularly interested in doing, because it, it inhibits you during the, the negotiation process, but it also, 'cause some, there's so many different variables in when you determine, like, what that wage increase is gonna be. So, um, so ultimately, um, you know, we, we were able to have that removed from the, from the contract, which we thought was, was pretty critical, we never really liked that language being in there. And then the, um, the one, sort of, you, one unique aspect of the AMPs MOA is, we have a, currently, the, the AMPs provide, um, an, uh, an article in which the town will match up to 1% of a contribution to a mutual funds. And so, it, it isn't particularly well utilized by, by members of AMPs, but there's always been the concern of, on the town's part, that that potentially could be a, an expensive proposition. So, it's something that we've had removed from other contracts, so we look to get it removed from AMPs as well. So, so, um, we ultimately had an agreement that new hires would not be eligible for that, so would, people would be grandfathered in, but we would, you know, hopefully sort of phase that out. And, um, you know, one thing that, that Jim had mentioned earlier, one of the changes that we, when we talked about the training, one of the changes we made to both MOAs is that we basically, under rights of management, there's a number of rights that we had, it didn't specifically say training, and so we actually added that in there, and, and one of the reasons we did that is, is because we really are at the point where we need to start getting people trained, mandating training, and, you know, even the, you know, the cybersecurity one is a good example, where, um, sometimes there's some resistance to that. So, so we just don't want to, to have any issues down the road, so we tried to clarify that language, so.
Questions from the board?
Not yet.
Before you, before you read further.
Well, I appreciate all the work that goes into bargaining and, on both sides of the table, and, but it seems like it was, it's been productive.
Right, and I, and I, again, I think it was, it was well-received by the membership, so that was good as well, and I think-
How many other unions do we have?
So, there's six bargaining units altogether, um, so, yeah.
On the town side?
Yeah, yeah.
Then 12 may have seen us.
That's their problem.
But the, the only outstanding bargaining unit we'll have after tonight is the fire union, um, and we've had some really productive meetings with them recently, so, um, I think we're, we're close to getting, hopefully, close to getting something over with the fire union, 'cause as I said, the last couple of meetings, I think I've been pretty productive with them, and I think we're getting close.
Is anyone operating without a contract?
Fire.
Okay.
And then, well, and then, if, if this is ratified, then yeah, this would, we'd be covering with everyone else.
Great.
This is agreed on.
Anybody else?
No, just thank you, I know it's a ton of work, and you've been very instrumental, I think, in helping Jim clean up some of this language too, 'cause it's a lot of detail.
Yeah, Bob did, actually, Bob did a lot of these contracts, was the interaction to face on a lot of, on the AMPs and the Tosca contracts, so he handled really the vast majority of this.
Well, thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
Something blows up, it's Bob's fault.
Yeah, exactly. All right. Aaron?
No, thank you, it's very thorough, appreciate the summary, too.
Do we need a motion, or just to ratify it by signature at the end?
No, I think you need to vote to, to execute the MOAs with AMPs and Tosca.
Okay.
Speak now or forever hold your peace, Tony?
No, I'm good.
Good. Very good, yes, a motion?
Motion to approve the collective bargaining memorandum of agreement for SEIU, local 188, Tosca, and AMPs bargaining units.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bagnani, all in favor?
Aye.
Four, nothing, motion carries, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Bob.
Is there another motion?
Yeah, non-union classification.
Yes, next.
Yes.
Okay, so-
Yes.
The, um, so, per the town administrator's request, um, we had created a classification and compensation plan for non-union permanent employees, non-contract, non-union, permanent employees of the town. And, and really, the, the, the form that, that the classification plan takes really is, is a, it's a salary table, for the most part, um, and, so the idea being that we would create a salary table for non-union employees, um, in which they would be placed on a grade similar to what we, we do with, um, with, with union employees, and they would be afforded yearly step increases on the anniversary date. So, there's a few advantages to that, one is, it, you know, there's some consistency with, with how we're, we're sort of compensating employees regardless of their union status. It also helps us, I think, to recruit and retain employees, sometimes when you hire a new employee, and all you can say is, yeah, this is where you're gonna be, you know, this is your compensation for here on, you know, here on in, you know, and so, um, it's good to be able to sort of show them something that, that shows where, how they'll move. Um, and it's also something that I think a lot of towns have, have taken upon themselves to do it, I know Hingham and Duxbury are kind of in this process right now as well. So, um, in terms of, of creating the, the salary table, I actually, you should have that in your packet, this is what the table looks like. So, for the, the salaried or class, um, confidential personnel, we created seven grades, these grades are, for the most part, are separated by, um, by, um, 10%, so the difference between one grade and the next is 10%, and each step is, is differentiated by 2.5%. On the, on the second page, non, non-union hourly personnel, there's five grades, um, and again, there's nine steps with, with both, with both tables. The ninth step being, um, I think on the document you have may say 20 years, but I think we'll probably change that to 15 years, given that we just negotiated that decrease with the Tosca and AMPs, so. So, really, the, that's kind of what the salary table looks like, the process for determining kind of how our employees fit into that, and, and what the, what the actual, um, what the numbers look like, the first step really is to go through a, a market survey for our, for, for these positions, and, and there's a, a few ways that you can do that, really the most useful way is to look at the, the Mass Municipal Association has a compensation survey system in which all, not all, but many towns and municipalities enter their employees' compensation into a database, and, um, according to the, the job title. Many of the job titles are similar to ours, not all of them are, so, um, we were able to pull a lot of data from that. The data that we pulled was from FY21, 'cause it really is the most current data that's in there. Um, there were some towns that we obviously had to, you know, I mean, there's some small town in Western Massachusetts, who's, who's not even beginning to compete, but then there's other large cities like Springfield, where, you know, it may be like exorbitantly high of what the director of facilities for the town of Springfield makes compared to our director of facilities. So, anyways, we sort of weeded through that and got the most applicable, um, salaries, and then we created a range for each of the, sort of, the, the salary positions, and that's that document that you see there. So, for, um, with that range, we actually placed our current, again, this is FY21, but we placed our current employees in that range to sort of see how they, where they fit and where they fell. It was actually, we were encouraged because it was, it was clear that they were all, like, well within the range, it all really seemed appropriate to us. We, um, didn't find a lot of outliers, we did find one or two, for example, I think our outreach coordinator for the Council on Aging, um, it was a vacant position, but when we looked at the, at some of the, this data, we realized that that position was really undercompensated. And, and the other thing that we did is, we, we really compared these positions to existing situat union positions, 'cause there's, there's, there's parallels there, particularly with the hourly positions. So, um, with that outreach coordinator position, before we posted it, we reclassified it, so it's, it's, it's in keeping with this scale. But we were encouraged that, that we felt like we were in, in a good place with this, that our employees were compensated adequately, we could, we could develop the scale, um, using their existing salaries, there wasn't a need to reclassify, um, many of them other than that one position. And so, then we took the employee, the, the positions and placed them on this scale based on, you know, their salary, the skills, education, experience, we kind of sort of grouped them together, similar jobs together, and, and were able to create this salary table. The, the, a lot of data that we used was, like I said, it was for FY21. So, this table that I had presented to the, the select board, actually, we actually reflected that 2% increase that I, we just, I just talked about being negotiated for AMPs and Tosca. Typically, that's what the town does, if we negotiate an increase for AMPs and Tosca, we'll apply that same increase to non-union employees, so we just added it to the scale. So, that's sort of where we are today. If we were to, if this was to be adopted by the, by the select board, we would then go back and assign, um, employees onto this scale with the, the basic sort of premise being, they cannot lose money, right? So, you just go to the scale at the, the next sort of highest, highest step. So, um, with that being said, um, we would, if, if we just took, we have 32 employees, I believe, who are actually affected by this, um, yeah, 32 employees were affected by this. If we just gave the 2% collar for those, to those 32 employees, the cost for the town for FY22 would be $24,177, right? But we're also taking employees and placing them on a scale where they may not, like, fit exactly at a step, so some of them actually get a big, bit of a bump, because they have to, you know, be placed at a higher step. That, that cost, or that expense of doing that is $15,130. So, um, the other way to look at that too, is that some of, some of that placement at the step is almost the equivalent of getting a step, you know, it's almost like, you know, it's something that many of these employees may not have had previously, so, so it's not just a matter of placing them on the scale, it actually kind of reflects what some of them might have got if they had received steps in the past, so. So, the total expense is $39,307. So, I would, um, I would, uh, request adoption of the classification plan from the select board.
So, this, this is required under the bylaw and the charter, but I present a wage scale to the board, so, um, and it's also, as Bob said, kind of an equity thing, that we try to treat the non-union employees the same as we treat the union employees.
And employees will be able to see this document, right?
Mm-hmm.
Right, right, so-
Yeah.
That's important.
Sure.
Yes, Maury. Um, when you're correcting the step, you know, where, is that determined by years of service and skill, like, how do you, how did you determine where to place these folks in their, in which step, and then to start? Does that make sense?
Right, no, it's a good question, I mean, so-
Where to start.
So, really, we, we remove the person and their wages, it's sort of, you know, I mean, we knew generally what the skill would be, and place the position in a grade. So, once a position's placed in a grade, then you basically look at their existing salary and say, okay, in that existing salary, where would they fall in this, in this, in this scale? Um, you know, so, so it, it varied, some, 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 it really, honestly, it wasn't, like, it, it didn't equate to years of service, you know, so, so, but what we did see though, is that some of the employees who have been here a little bit longer were a little bit on the higher end of that scale, and some of the newer employees were actually on the, on the beginning of that scale, so, um, you know, but it, but it didn't, like, you know, at entirely sort of equate to years of service. If we were to do that, we would have to dramatically adjust people's compensation, up or down, if we were to entirely base it on just years of service.
Just to piggyback on that, so, are, you said there's nine steps for each position?
Correct.
And I'm looking at the min and max range of the 12 positions you gave us?
Mm-hmm.
So, what does that mean? Are there nine steps between the min and the max? Or is there-
No, I, I, no, um, so, the min, min and max salary that you see is from the salary survey.
Right.
So, that was from, we, I took the average, so, when the, um, the MMA salary survey tool actually has a minimum salary and a maximum salary, so what I just did for the, the appropriate towns, I just took the, I averaged out those minimums and maximums. So, um, and then, then in that same table, I placed the situat salary to see if they fell within that range.
Yep, but where do the steps go? Just up from that, like, are there nine steps above this current situat salary?
So-
Sorry, I have a-
So, so when we created the table, we created, we, we created a, the, the steps within the table, um, and the, and the grades were all created with the, with a certain principle that one, one grade is 10% higher than the next grade, every grade is two point, every step is 2.5% higher than the next grade, so we cre, almost like create the table first, and then you have to sort of play with, like, where that starts, and then it's, it's more a matter of, okay, the, the salary survey tells us that our employees are adequately compensated, it also tells us that that range is at least similar, it's not dollar for dollar, but it's similar to the, to the range that we place them on the salary scale. So, it's really a tool to make sure that we're kind of, like, in the ballpark, if you, if you don't-
I understand that for now, but I'm, I'm thinking about, whatever, if you wanna take one of these positions-
Yeah.
Are they at the highest grade and the highest step, or are they at the lowest grade and the lowest step? Like, where, where is this going?
Like, if somebody new comes in, do you mean?
Yeah, or a current person.
Yeah.
You know, what, you're looking at a, like, we're just looking at a snapshot, saying, okay, what we're paying people right now is within the range of the data that you looked at.
Right.
And now, you're saying there's, how many grades are there for each, you know, so there's, how many levels of 10% increase are there? And I get the steps in between, then of 2%, 2 and 1/2%.
But the grades, but the grades of 10% increase are based on- But the grades of 10% increase are based on definition of position. It's not year to year, if you look at it. So if you look at the table, right, he's got different roles classified, right?
What table are you looking at?
I'm on page 49.
49?
Yeah. If you look there, and it took me a while to get it, but.
So if Bob set up the table, so you're in, your position is a grade six position, which is $10 to $20 is the range. Your current salary is $12. You'll be at the closest grade to $12 without going down. So that could be step two. If you're making $20, you'd be at the top step. So again, he set up the grades. He positioned each position within a grade, and then each employee gets fit into that grade based upon what their current salary is that slots them on the steps. If that makes sense?
Yeah. So are the, the top grade and the low grade from that min-max analysis you did?
No, no, they, they don't necessarily equate. This is more just a tool to say, like, are they generally in like the ballpark? You know, are we kind of in the, in the ballpark when we have created these scales?
For right now?
Right.
Right, but did you base the grade? I mean, there's, how many grades are there? There's nine?
There's nine.
Nine grades around each position?
No, no, I'm sorry, there's nine steps. There's seven grades.
There's only seven grades.
Oh, seven grades.
Seven grades, right.
There might not be anybody in a particular grade.
Right.
A particular grade could be empty.
Like, grade five is empty.
There's no one in five.
So.
And how I see this is that this just ensures that these folks are afforded an annual recognition and increase instead of saying, oh, my God, we haven't looked at this grade in five years. I got to catch them up and give them a 15% increase, right? In that, this is a better, better for our employees and a better budgeting tool as well, I would imagine, right?
Right, absolutely, right. Because right now, you know, I mean, we, we may have an employee who's non-union who comes to, you know, Jim or me or Nancy saying, you know, I feel like I'm undercompensated. And we go through an entire process. This, we've sort of just done that. We said like, no, we've done that objective process, removing the individual and so.
So one of the quick questions. So are all employees are on the same scale regardless of their role? So like I see at the bottom, there's, you know, six or seven positions. At the top, there's six or seven positions. So they're all on the same potential earning path regardless of their role?
No.
Well.
Look at this, no. Look at step one on each grade level, and they're different because they've been market analyzed.
Right, but that person can get up to grade nine, I mean, grade seven over the years.
This grade seven, not.
No, these are steps, these are grades.
Right, you don't, you don't go up in grade.
Right, right, right.
You only go up in step.
Unless you, unless you change positions.
Oh, it gets reclassified.
Right.
So if you're at grade five, you stay at grade five till you get to the top step.
Oh, until you are.
And then you don't go to step six. You just go grade five.
So you've ranked each position at a grade?
Yes.
Right.
So our treasurer collector is grade, whatever it is, and?
Grade, grade six, right.
Right.
So, right, and that treasurer collector, we would, we've created this scale. If it, if adopted, we would look at where that person, what the current salary is, and place that person at the appropriate step on that grade.
But you wouldn't change the grade, you change the step?
Correct.
You change the step?
Within the grade.
Instead of the grade, you wouldn't?
Yeah, right, right, yeah. So, no.
A position has a grade.
She's grade six.
Yes.
And step one is 14 and step two is 15, and she's making 14, 50. She should be at 15.
And your step, your step date is your anniversary date. So the anniversary of your hire date. So every, every year, you go up to, you go up one more step on your anniversary date.
But in order to jump grades, you have to change your position?
Right.
When we create a new position, we say it's a grade five.
Right.
Right.
And that's the pay range of that.
Of that position, right.
Right.
Presumably, the only asterisk to that is if you do a salary review in three years and you realize, oh, treasurer collectors are now really at the grade seven, you might adjust where that person falls.
Right.
But it's, that would only be based on a comparable analysis of the position.
Exactly, yeah. And it could, right, and it often it's part of recruitment. I mean, you're, you're looking to fill a job, and it's three months later, and you can't fill it, and you're hearing that, like, we're just like underpaying. And so we potentially would go through that. Which is what happened, honestly, with the one position I mentioned, the outreach coordinator. We realized when we were recruiting for it, I was like, oh, wait, we're like well undercompensating that position, which is why we regraded it. So we put it at a different grade than we would have had normally.
And then when you're recruiting, it's difficult when you're recruiting because someone retires, they've been there for 25 years, they're making X. And what's the salary? Well, the current person makes this. They've been there for 20 years, so probably not going to pay you that because you're new. What are you going to pay me? Well, we still got to figure that out.
Right.
Whereas this, this is the salary range, and you can fit in the salary range. But that's, that's it. It doesn't go higher, it doesn't go lower.
Okay.
Great work.
Any other questions on the board? Do you want to motion? Please, anyone in the audience have a question? You can't, it's what we're looking at, sorry.
We will be coming back with a.
With what?
Hugely thick, dense, boring, complicated.
Handbook?
Personnel handbook that I'm about 100 pages into. You're viewing, but that'll be coming up sometime in the.
Just give us more than three days to read it, okay?
Yeah, yeah, that, that one will take you some time. That's a.
Okay, move to approve the non-union salary classification plan as presented.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Lots of work, thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Well, we're a little behind now.
25 minutes to get to all the budgets.
All right. Discuss, review, budget presentations.
Nope, we got Friends.
Oh, the Friends bookstore sign. Sorry about that. Is someone here to speak to that?
Ms. Banks?
You, Ms. Banks?
Hi, I'm Florence Banks. This is Mary Lou Butler, the president.
Okay. Can't recognize people always with their masks on, so.
I'm taking it off, I can't breathe. Hi Karen. You all received a request for a permit. I'd like, for the benefit of the audience, if you don't mind, just to say who the Friends are and what our mission is. We exist to support the library and through the library, the community. We do this by providing about $25,000 a year to supplement the budget and to pay for programs for children and adults, to pay for the museum passes, and to provide certain special events like workshops and the summer music program. We raise the funds through an annual donor drive and through RU's bookstore in the ground level of the library. As I stated to you in what we presented, we are constantly astonished that people don't know we have a bookstore in the library. And we have made, this year particularly, a concerted effort through social media, through developing a newsletter to make the community aware that we raise funds to benefit the community. And one thing we do not have is a sign on the library grounds. And we've invested a lot of time and research into this and have come up with what we think is a very aesthetic approach to a sign on the library grounds. And we think that having a sign on the grounds would help create more awareness of a bookstore and hopefully bring in more income to provide more programming for the library. So here we are. Do you have any questions about what we sent you?
I thought it was well done, very informative. Anyone have any comments? I know Karen has a special place in her heart for the library.
Well, first, I want to commend the Friends.
Yeah, I have it up there.
Once the new library opened, you guys are, we've got the A team working on that, that new space, and it's definitely paid off. I just would only add that, I don't think you mentioned that the library trustees have reviewed this proposal and were in, in vote, I believe unanimously, to support the addition of the sign. So that happened, I think, last week.
Were any questions?
No, I mean, I'm one of the ignorant people. I had no idea there was a bookstore in there. So I did not know that there was a separate.
Well, there you have it.
Entity, yes, so there you go. Customer.
Still time for Christmas shopping.
Where is it located?
On the ground level.
Some Broad Street, if you go down past.
On the driveway that doesn't have any lighting on the curb?
The light and the bad lighting.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, just conversation.
You go down the elevator, it's just opposite the elevator at the ground level, and we expect to see you there soon.
But you will, it's a very, it's a very tasteful sign, I will say. So if the trustees and the library are all on board and it's within our bylaw, I don't have any issues with it.
The only question that I don't think was in the backup is the cost for the sign, will that be out of the Friends funds?
Yes, no. Totally funded by the Friends, they've already voted on an amount.
Okay.
And we've visited six different sign makers. So the cost ran from what you have on the design, on the, on the plan up to $4,000. So we couldn't afford a carved sign.
Well, I think it looks nice the way it is. So, and it is good to publicize the bookstore's existence. I know how hard you work.
Up there, found the number.
Any other questions?
Are you a 501(c)(3) organization?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Great, thank you for all your work.
Yes.
Do you want to motion? Move to approve a six-square-foot Friends bookstore sign at Citratown Library on Towne O' property as pictured by the applicant and approved by the Citratown Library Board of Trustees, unless there's a different.
Motion by Ms. Karen.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero with our great appreciation for all the work you do.
Oh, and our appreciation for your support, thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you, guys.
Great, thank you. And I see Jessie back there nodding her head. All right. Lost my focus on the agenda. Onto the budget. It's not a meeting if I don't skip something, right? Assessors, number 141. Call Mr. DeVito?
Hi. Good evening, how are you?
Joe, how are you?
Good morning.
It's going to be a long day if you said good morning.
I did. We've had a couple of those.
So sometimes we do the goals, objectives, et cetera, but I'm wondering how the board feels about getting right to the numbers. Does anyone want a summary? It's fine with me if you do, but.
I can do it in 30 seconds.
Elevator pitch, great.
Seriously, it's the same goals and objectives every single year. Better assessments. Better assessments equal, equitably. No, no, not necessarily. I mean, that, that too with, with growth.
Yeah.
But more accurate and fair assessments means that the tax levy is being spread more fairly. And that is our number one goal and priority. And we try to make strides every year, and we plan on making more strides this year with some extra tools that are in the budget. One tool is something called NearMap, which is a little bit like Google Earth, only it's a, it's a great measuring tool that helps us stay busy. Not that we're not busy on a rainy day, but we can still do field work in the office by measuring properties and things like that that satisfy Department of Revenue requirements to measure and list every property once every 10 years. So we were able to get a head start on that, at least on the simplified structures. Some of the more complicated angled structures, we do 100% in the field. Otherwise, we, we start off here in the office, in the building, using this program, NearMap, to measure every property before we go out in the field. And then we have little notes saying, you know, just check a few spot measurements or this was a disaster, or, you know, look for this whatever, new, new deck, or look for the pool, the garage, and that sort of thing. So it helped us pick up some additional new growth this year. And that's just one more tool in the toolbox. We're using MLS a lot more, multiple listing service, than we had in the past. We're still inspecting every property that's sold, every property that pulls a permit. And at random properties, anybody that files for an overvaluation, abatement application, that property's inspected. And we're really going to turn it up this year as well as, well, this current fiscal year as well as fiscal '23. We need to inspect about 2,000 properties on our own. And with the contract that you just approved, I will have the skill set in my office to be able to do that. And I like the way our office is structured. One full-time clerical, one part-time clerical, and now a more technical position with the, the position that was created with this MOA tonight. So we're trying to continue to improve those assessments, and I, I do think they are improving. Basically, the better the data, the better the assessments. Any questions, please?
Questions, board?
Your budget is pretty level funded, yeah, except for the addition.
Except for the, the salary was the main increase. The, everything but salary went up $200.
May I, I just have one question because I thought we were only adding over at the senior center. Is this just a, a classification change to, so you have an assistant? Or are you actually adding an additional body?
Not an additional body.
That's what I thought.
It's, it's taking the senior clerk, clerk position.
And reclassifying.
Exactly.
Got it.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the same person going to be doing that job?
Hopefully. There is a process, but this, the person who's the senior clerk does have the skill set. Voluntarily learned the skill set, which is very commendable. And it's not just that one person. The whole office works together unbelievably. And great support from the administration, from you, from all of you, and from the Board of Assessors. So thank you.
Can you talk about the technical services for a second?
Sure.
Because the actuals are coming in a lot less than the budget.
Mainly because of COVID. A lot of it, so the $11,000 is for the updated values every year and the revaluations. So that's, what used to cost us $72,000 for one revaluation is now costing us $55,000 for basically five revaluations. That's a level funded item, so you won't see me come looking for, I'm sorry, I thought my phone was on very bright, for extra money during the revalue, which is 2024. It's going to be $11,000. We have a five, five-year contract. And so that money is spent annually, that $11,000. The $15,000 for inspections has not been spent, has been rolled over because of COVID. I wanted to get the most bang for my buck and not just do exterior inspections, but internal and external inspections. So we've, we've started that.
So are you saying that some of this 37 is accrued for the?
Yes.
For the larger inspection every three years?
Not, some of last year's money that was unexpend, not expended, but targeted for last fiscal year will be spent. Was rolled over and will will be spent. That's how we're gonna be able to tackle 3,900 inspections. 2,000 in-house, 1,900 with technical services.
Okay, I think.
Yeah, it's. So they're doing commercial inspections right now. Front Street has been completed. They're in the driveway area right now.
Do assessors have any sort of town identification on them so that people don't get scared?
Yes. Yep, we have IDs and our consultants have IDs. They wear vests, orange vests, and we also notify the police so they know what they're driving.
Good, good.
And and so forth.
All right.
Plus, I drive a really cool electric car. People see.
So everyone knows you, right?
Yes.
No more questions?
Well, thank you very much.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you all.
Next is the library. Ms. Vinnie? Hello, Jessie.
Hi, everyone.
So would you like to tell us what's going on? It's hard to believe it's already five years old.
I know. Big anniversary this year.
I find that shocking.
It's been a weird couple of years, these last these last couple. But but we're really excited about the anniversary. And I do want to mention that I have Joe McNally here, the president of the the Situate Library Foundation.
Very good.
I think they're gonna have something fun planned for five years. And I also have Elizabeth Holt, also one of our library trustees, with us as well tonight.
You have a great deal of support.
I do.
Wonderful.
Yes. And of course, you just talked to the Friends, who also give us a great deal of support. So, you know, we have the same mission that we always do, so I won't I won't go through that again. We do have some specific departmental goals for this year. The first being that we are requesting a new position to be added. This is not the first time we've asked. And, you know, when we moved into the new building five years ago, the previous library director had made a commitment to the town to try to keep the same number of staff, opening the building with the same number of staff, which which we did, which we did honor. But the library has been busy. And especially with the youth services department, the demand for programs and services has really exploded. Not just with the the folks who come in every day, our our parents, our caregivers, and our children and teens, but also with the schools as well and some of the expectations that that they have for the work that we'll be doing with them. And the reality is that right now, we staff that room approximately with a full-time staff person's hours, about 35 hours a week. Somebody who does not work in the youth services goes down to cover our youth services just because of, you know, various vacancies or things on the schedule that we need to cover. And when that happens, you know, of course, anybody who comes in the library, I hope, can expect to get good customer service. But I think because the children and teens collections have very unique components to them because they have projects that they may be aware of, that the schools are working on. They may have, you know, you know, with the childrens especially, there are different reading levels, Lexile levels, accelerated reader. There are so many so many things that they need to be aware of that when someone who is not working in youth services is staffing youth services, it it does create kind of a knowledge gap. And I do think if we had a full-time dedicated person added to that staff, that it would just be better service for the town as a whole. I understand all of the competing priorities the town has and everything that they're up against. But the the demand is there. And in order to meet it, I do think we really need to add an additional person to the to the staff. The second goal that we have is to work towards becoming a fine-free library. And again, I know this is not the first time I brought this before you guys as well. But this time, I'm asking you to consider it a little differently. There are so many libraries all over the country, certainly in the Commonwealth and even in our own network. There are about eight or nine that have gone completely fine-free. It has had no impact on their collections. Many of them have have done this for, you know, a year, two years even. And it has no impact on return rates or anything like that. You know, most people in their communities are just thrilled with this offering. And what I'm asking you to consider is to allow children's and young adult materials to circulate fine-free, which would mean that if you're a parent, your card wouldn't necessarily be fine for your adult materials could accrue fines, but your children's materials would not. And one of the things that we hear sometimes from parents is, oh, you know, don't pick out more than three or four books because, you know, you have three kids and four books each and you've got all this stuff to manage. So they're worried about accruing these fines. So we see it as a barrier. And we would like to remove that barrier, especially for the childrens and teens. We think also removing fines for cards over 65, for for ages 65 and up for our our town seniors would would be an amazing service to them. Many of them, if not most of them, live on a fixed income. So it's just one less thing for them to worry about. So again, taking baby steps towards becoming fine-free. This would give the town an opportunity to see the impact, to see, you know, how the community responded to it. You know, during COVID, we did not take in fines because so many libraries were quarantining, including our own. And it was very difficult to determine, did a patron return something late or was it a quarantining issue? So we have not been taking in fines. Prior to that, our fine revenue had dropped significantly because we have implemented something called automatic renewals, what I won't bore you too much with. But it really cut our revenue down already by half. I think we were maybe bringing in less than $8,000 per fiscal year. That does not come to the library's budget. It comes to the general fund. So ultimately, this is a decision for Jim and and for all of you to to make. But, you know, we would strongly recommend it. The board has taken a affirmative vote on this. But of course, they, you know, don't necessarily have the power to to enact this. And lastly, we're working with the Library Foundation to bring the CBC-funded project for Thoreau's Way to fruition. It has been a real challenge. We're in a really unusual spot of having a project that's big enough to go out to to public bid, a sealed bid project. But it requires bid specifications to be written. And engineers, architects, landscape architects have just not really been interested in talking to us because the project is just not big enough for them to really get a lot of revenue from it. And everybody, as you know, is incredibly busy right now. We recently have a retired architect, Eric Cluse, who has offered his services to help us with his connections, find possibly an engineer, a local engineer, to provide those specifications. He already has a few people that he's gonna be talking to. This could really move the project forward and get us to the point where we can be ready to go to bid. So we are really hopeful that we can move that forward. I just really wanted to mention, you know, some of our statistics from the last year. You know, and also really just to commend the library staff. It's been a really challenging time for for everyone, just in general. And I know so many of our departments in Situate were open during COVID when when many others, many other towns were not. The library was no exception. We were one of the few libraries in the state, certainly almost one of the only libraries in our network to be open. And we were really proud to serve the community during this time. And then when we fully reopened with no restrictions in the summer, it was like a normal summer for us. It was a very, very busy summer. And overall, in the year, we loaned out about 200,000 physical items and 150,000 digital items. So, you know, we were really quite busy. And we were serving a lot of residents, not just from Situate, but from many other communities in the area. In the summer, we did our first completely outdoors summer reading program. We held 48 programs with about 1,300 children attending. It was a lot of extra work for the staff, so I really appreciate everything they did. Many of our families had literally not attended programs for, you know, the entirety of COVID. So these were the first things that they were doing. And it was great to see people coming out to Mama's Stuff for the first time in a couple of years. You know, just really nice things to see. And, you know, again, during the time where we were under limited services, we had a lot going on. We worked in many in-house projects. One of the only benefits, the stacks being, many of the stacks being closed, is we got to do a lot of cleanup work. We did a diversity audit with many of our collections, which was great for us to be able to do that work. And we applied for a lot of of grants totaling about 136,000 altogether. So, you know, so we were we were really quite busy. And again, I'm just really proud of the work that that all of the staff did. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Thank you. So Jim, did you approve an additional staff person? I can't tell from this.
We had over 14 requests for new employees across the budget. The only position that is funded is a new position in the IT department, and that doesn't get funded until January 1st because of budget constraints. So the only position, the only new position in the entire budget is an IT position.
Questions from the board? I have a couple, yes.
Well, because I didn't even see that that request was in the financial piece. Usually it shows in the department request, and that's the same as.
Not there on a separate form?
What?
Request for additional staff is on a separate form.
Oh, it's not. Oh, it usually used to be just right in there. The my other question, though, is so just with regards to your additional staff request, Jessie?
Yes.
Is is your roster up to date? Sometimes I know these things get filled in between the time this book gets put together. So right now, I see two open positions, one full-time open position and one part-time. Is that true?
That is correct.
Yeah, so, I mean, what I would suggest, if if you're having a hard time hiring and the need is in children's, right? Maybe can you shift that? Are these classified? I don't know if these.
They are both in children's.
These two openings are both children's?
Yes.
Oh. Okay. All right, so those are both existing children's that are open. So you've got an empty department.
I've got one person, one full-time person in the department, one part-time vacancy and one full-time vacancy.
And then my other question is, where do the $8,000 in fines show in the revenue?
Local receipts, miscellaneous local.
Just goes local, doesn't go back here. So we don't see it here?
No.
Okay.
It's in the general fund.
And what, you know, what action needs to take place to go to a fine-free for?
Probably the library trustees would have to vote, and the selectmen would have to vote.
Okay, so it's really not up to us?
Well, it is because generally, but.
At the end of the day.
Yeah.
$8,000.
We'd have to say we're willing to forego.
Right.
Whatever it is.
Okay.
The trustees have not voted on this?
They have voted in the affirmative on this. But again, they're, you know, because that money is not under the library's budget.
But they support the policy behind the recommendation?
Yes.
Tony?
Yeah, I guess my question is with these two vacancies, if you had them, do you have the need for a new person?
Yes, because I'm really, you know, a lot of the basis for requesting this position is is a little pre-COVID because, you know, I'm really basing it on the three years prior to that, all the programs we were doing, the services we were doing. And the fact that we have to so often pull people from other areas of the library to put them into children's. So during the closure with COVID, we did not make this request last year because it was not as necessary. We weren't doing any programs. And that is what takes up a lot of time for the people working in that department is programs. So, you know, we we didn't really see the need to request that position last year. But with the return to programs and kind of everything ramping back up again, we do expect to have that need return.
So there's programs that you're not able to do? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
If you had both of these positions filled, there'd be programs that you have done in the past that you wouldn't be able to do?
No, I mean, the posit, if when the positions are filled, we'll be able to do what we have historically been able to do. If we were able to add an additional position, we would be able to do even more.
Right. And then my my other question is on the the fees. I mean, the fees are kind of, you know, and I'm I'm supportive, you know, doing it. But if it was part of your budget, because it kind of is, I mean, it just, your budget comes from someplace, but all that money goes in and gets shuffled out. If that was a line item in your budget, is that something that you would still want to do? You know, would you find $8,000 worth of savings in your budget to to not have that that fee being assessed anymore? I guess that's, I mean, you don't really look at it that way because it's not part of your budget, but it kind of is. It's just another bucket.
No, I I understand what you're saying. And I think, you know, I'd have to talk to the board about their position on it. But certainly, I would be in support of it because I want to remove any barrier to people feeling like they shouldn't be taking out library materials. And I do feel like that is a barrier. And me personally, when I have library fines on on my account, it does it does not bother me. But but there are a lot of people who really take that very seriously, and it does impact their willingness to take out materials and, you know, anything.
Yeah, I agree. But I guess the question in budgeting is if you're gonna take that out, where are you gonna where are you gonna find it in your budget to not have that $8,000 worth of revenue?
Well, we do feel like we get a amount from state aid for libraries every year that we often use for for items that are outside of our operating budget. So we often pick up expenses that would normally be picked up by the town through our state aid account. So we already feel like we contribute funds outside of our own operating budget, not to mention the $25,000 a year that the Friends commit, the money that the foundation commits to the library. So we do feel like we have many other, you know, things that that we have for for revenue to to kind of help help with any additional expenses. So I suppose that's kind of how we would make it up if it were a part of our budget.
Okay. Thanks.
Well, continuing on that theme, if the words automatic renewal?
Yes.
Couldn't you get rid of fines by just automatically renewing things, essentially?
What we do, so so that's a network-wide thing. So that's a decision that was made network-wide. And we all, we all of us, all the 26 libraries have to agree on that kind of thing. So we've agreed to, I believe it's two, automatic renewals. So that that carries most people through.
And that's pretty generous.
It is, yeah.
Is it a two-week renewal?
It is.
I think that's pretty generous.
Yeah, if it's a if it's a new book or if it's has a hold on it, it would not, that would not be the case. Yeah.
Well, I suspect you're chasing people who have the more popular items. Yeah, I I don't want to beat a dead horse on the issue of the the position. But you have a good memory, and the library director did promise the town that the new building would not require additional people. And so that's why.
And then she retired. So what happened with that?
Well, and then you got to get the glory of opening the library. No, I mean, it was it was a commitment that was made, and people don't forget. And because it was a big concern.
And with all due respect, that was almost 10 years ago. So I just think that it's worth revisiting.
We're still paying off the bond. And so I'm just saying that's why it's it's a hard sell. It's a hard sell.
Just for the boards, that doesn't even enter into my calculations.
No, but it does to some of us.
Yeah, I'm just, but I look at what what are my legal responsibilities? What are my liabilities? What are my vulnerabilities? So right now, one of our biggest liabilities is cybercrime, cyber insurance. Since Mike Mancello's been here, we've added hundreds of thousands of dollars of networking. And and that's probably our biggest vulnerability right now, so that's where it gets ranked. But when I'm looking at Jessie's position, I don't take into account that the library director 10 years ago said, we're not gonna need new positions. We just try to look at where that would slot, the priority of things. And unfortunately, only one thing got knocked off that list, and that was the IT.
Any other questions about the library budget? Nope.
Jessie, the only thing I'd say for this new position, it'd be great if you came back and said, here's what I would do with it.
Yeah.
You know, it's hard for us to look at a new position when there's two vacancies.
Yeah.
And if you came back and said, well, this is what I, this is what this person's gonna do, and they're gonna be able to do blah, 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 then that that just gives a little bit more meat to to what it is and makes us think about it and find other creative ways to make it fun stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for all the hard work the librarians do.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jessie.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
You, too.
Town clerk. I saw her. Kathy? Is she hiding? No, she's hobbling a little bit. What'd you do?
Oh, it's a hip.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Wasn't me.
It wasn't you. At this rate, I'll never get a hip replacement. I don't know. They're starting to call off surgeries, but we'll see.
Oh, I know.
So happy holidays. Good evening. Where would you like me to begin?
Well, maybe a quick recap of the past year and the coming up. It looks like a slightly less difficult year coming up, I hope.
No, we, this has been our quieter year. So we're coming up on the biennial elections in the fall of 2022. I'll just start off. We, Anne had resigned, my part-timer had resigned this year. So we welcomed Andrea to the fold. She's our part-time records clerk, and of course, Heather's our assistant town clerk. And kudos to them because we've had a quiet time. So we've been able to train Andrea a little bit better and more thoroughly. She did her first town meeting in the fall. And of course, I'm up front with the moderator, so I don't know how things are going. But she got quite a few compliments from people that are fellow workers. So that worked out well. That was nice to hear. But kudos.
Um, but kudos to both of them, they are great, customer service skills are above the chart. They're so sweet and pleasant to all, everybody that comes in the officer calls, so they go out of their way. Um, as far as goals, my goal's certification, my certification for town clerk, I took three online Mass Town Clerk's classes as opposed to going to the conference, paid for it, and, um, I did not get credit for each class. So I said, "Why?" Oh, no, it wasn't, I, so I reread the whole signup sheet and there was nothing that said you weren't going to get credit for online courses, so I'm still going to argue with that one. I have six credits left before I get my certification, so I'm like getting a little antsy about that. It's been years, and two years of a pandemic doesn't help. Um, you know, when we're coming up on a fiscal, um, excuse me, on a biennial election year or any other year as an election year, um, we basically take care of the previous election years, reorganizing of the basement and shuffling things around for destruction. So that's goal number two, is just cleaning up, anticipating that we need more space for the election year to come up, uh, to retain those records. And election training, of course, okay? We have some things in the legislature right now. Um, there's some special interest groups trying to change early voting to make it 10-hour days on the weekends. Thank you very much. Um, and of course they're doing the primary, um, early voting in-person for a week prior to the election and it'd be two weeks for the state elections. Just a heads up as well, uh, right now it's been, um, up to the town clerk whether you want to have in-person early voting here at town hall for a town election. As I explained to the advisory board last week, the problem with having early voting for a town election is the timeline. So you have 39 days before an election before nomination papers are due. Then you have a two-week period, excuse me, then two days after that, you have, you have to wait for the candidates to see if they're going to withdraw. Then you got another week to send it to the printer to get your absentees in. So now we're three and a half weeks before an election, town election. We do absenteeing, okay? It's a different process, same idea but different process, it, we do it in our office. Early voting is a different process, you have to have checkers, you have to have the poll pads or a check-in list and we do it out in the hall, so that requires staffing. And it would be one week prior to an election. What's the difference? Early voting, you don't need an excuse to come in and vote, absentee balloting, you do. And you're traveling, your religion, whatever it is, I'm not going to ask you for a doctor's note or airline tickets. So if you are unable to vote at the polls on election day, absentee voting starts sooner than early voting ever does. Um, so I'm just, I'm gonna, I've got it in my budget to staff early voting for a town election, but I don't recommend it. It's really not necessary when early voting, I mean, excuse me, absentee voting's in place. So, that being said, segueing into 2022, my major expenses are elections and support services. Part-time election staff, um, our salary has increased. Um, also we have the poll pads maintenance plan, which is part of my, um, uh, ser- what's it called? Brain cramp. Um, my expenses for election support services. Um, those are $1,500 a year, 17, uh, $1,800 a year for the maintenance for the, excuse me, $1,800 a year for the poll pads and a couple thousand dollars a year for the, um, election machines, you know, so that's all part of support services. So anytime you have, um, and then the custodial fees and all that. So anytime you have three elections, you have to do the math and say, "Okay, I need this custodial fee three times" and, you know, so on and so forth. So basically the expenses in the, the high rate of my budget this year is due to elections and the town meetings, so.
Questions from the board?
Let me straight forward.
Yeah, thank you.
Good job, Kathy.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kath.
That's it.
I don't know what else to, yeah.
Geez, happy holidays, this is great.
I know.
Christmas present.
Right, yay.
Thank you for all your work, and that's a lot of organization.
Thank you very much.
Now we have Widow's Walk.
All right, lovely revenue numbers.
What's that?
Widow's Walk revenue numbers always make me happy. But they have the last two years.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello, hi.
How we doing?
Good, how are you?
Fabulous.
If you'd like to introduce yourself to the home audience.
Yes, Ian Kelly, Director of Golf over at Widow's Walk Golf Course for the second year.
I think it's the first time I've seen you in person because you've, it's been COVID, COVID.
You don't play much golf.
I don't play any golf.
Well, he always has a golf cap on, too.
I typically do, yes, yeah. Um, so I'll just do a quick overview of the mission statement, I mean, same thing every year, but my goal, our goal is to make Widow's Walk the best public municipal golf course around to kind of mimic George Wright up in, up in Boston, those kind of high-level municipal courses, but keeping it affordable for local residents, so. We're just trying to do improvements, as most of you know, the clubhouse renovation is almost finished. So that was a interesting year, operating out of a trailer and a temporary restroom. So, thank you to these two for helping me out with all the small change orders and everything else. Not, not also small, but, um, you know, running a operation busy golf course with construction workers and trucks. It was interesting, but the end is near. So, the parking lot final coating just happened and they're going to top, they are going to paint the lines, um, next week. Dog walking starts, as Jim said, on Christmas Eve and, uh, all is well. Any questions?
Not yet.
The budget, budget is pretty much the same, um, besides the, obviously the debt for the clubhouse. That's the major difference, $289,000 for year one and that gradually goes down after that, so.
So revenue-wise, you've been having a good year?
Good year, not, I mean, last year was the pinnacle, right? COVID was unbelievable for golf, was bad for a lot of other things, but it was unbelievable for golf. So, you know, a lot of those golfers who were playing on a Wednesday in September, you know, weren't playing in a Wednesday, September this year. We're still on pace for the second-best, you know, revenue year we've had, about 1.5. Last year was 1.7 and change. So, um, with some added costs, um, we still should, you know, net a, a, a good chunk, not quite. Last year we netted about just over $600,000 in retained earnings, which was awesome, so. And the staff's great up there.
So you had a lucky start, right? Two, two lucky first years.
I wouldn't call it lucky.
Depends on your definition.
So what are we going to do for year?
No, we were a little lucky. Um, well, I think the big thing is getting the right restaurant in there. You know, I think that's the big.
Yeah.
You know, I hear from everyone about, you know, you get a great restaurant at this place, we'll boom for years, which is my goal. So that's our next process. We're gonna, all the bids are due January 18th and that's, you know, a big day for us to see, sit down with Jim and Nancy and go over all the bids.
Right, so the clubhouse, great, you did a great job this year, running out of a trailer, like you said, and revenue being as high as it is, the clubhouse should boom, you know, pick that up in merchandising, I'm, I'm hoping.
Yeah, merchandising, but I think greens, I mean, it was tough because some people that loved it and came early in the season didn't necessarily want to come back because there was no place to eat and drink, right? I mean, we had a temporary caterer with a tent for, you know, three, four days a week. But if it rained, what were you going to do? You know, it was, it was one of those, if it was windy, you know, you didn't want to sit out there and have stuff blowing all over. So it was kind of a different experience for them. And everybody just kept saying, "Oh, we can't wait, we can't wait." So, I was telling Jim and Nancy, we've already had, I've already had 15 inquiries for memberships from golfers who I don't know, so who aren't members or haven't been members before, which is great. So I think the membership and like the locals with the Players Pass program is going to boom and I think the greens fees and the car fees will stay high, I think the memberships will increase quite a bit, so. Should be, uh, should be a good spring.
So what's, what's the biggest challenge?
The biggest challenge, honestly, is going to gradually try, to which happened in the other, in the advisory meeting, is getting enough money and revenues to, to pay for the irrigation project that was, we put on hold.
Yeah, and I think that's, you know, we've got to come out to bid shortly with the people that maintain it. You know, that's, that's one of the biggest challenges in the past, has been keeping the quality of the course high.
The maintenance, yep.
Because you're doing a great job, I mean, people love it, people are raving about it, the clubhouse is going to boost it. You know, we've got the parking lot stuff resolved, the curb appeal is resolved. You know, it's really just keeping that golf course at a high play level.
Absolutely, yeah. This year was, it was, you know, we had more rain than I've ever seen in a, in a golf year ever, you know? Um, last year, it, it didn't rain for about 95 straight days. So, that's another reason why the revenues were a little bit higher last year, we did, we had a drought, you know, which was great for revenue and because of COVID, people still played us, our course. It was dry and burnt out. This year the conditions were much better, revenues were down a little bit, they're back to work, but everyone was happy with the greens, the fairways, the tee boxes need some work, you know, we know that, that's down the road. Um, that's the biggest, you know, quality on the course challenge, I would say. But everyone loves the greens, you know, um, fairways are great this year, roughs are great. I mean, I've only been here two years. I went from the brownest course I've ever seen to, you know, what it should be, you know, this year, which is good, so. And a, the big part of the irrigation project, we had segmented out in the special town meeting to connect the two ponds, so that, our biggest issue is water supply, not necessarily the irrig- I mean, the irrigation system needs to be replaced, but the water supply is always the biggest issue. Our irrigation pond up by the 13th and 6th hole is four times smaller than the pond on the ninth hole, where the fishing, where all the, you know, residents fish right after the, right at the edge of the parking lot. So, we got a small supply, which is why last year we couldn't water fairways and roughs. We only could water greens in July and August because that's all we had, because we need to make sure the greens are number one, obviously.
So we're connecting those two ponds, we can pump from the lower pond to the irrigation pond.
Underground.
And then we also have the well 18B project, which will take the wastewater from well 18B, set it down to a settlement tank and then kick it over into the ponds where we can use that on the golf course too, so.
Which happened a few months ago.
So how much additional water do you think that'll really provide?
That will, that will provide, that project that he's talking about, Kevin Cafferty and they, and the DPW did, was, will be about 35,000 gallons a day, which sounds like a ton, it's really not a ton. Usually about 250,000 gallons a day for a cycle of irrigation.
That's what you need.
Yeah. Um, connecting the ponds, we'll never have a water issue ever, so.
All right, that's great.
You heard it, it's going to be in the minutes.
I know.
Quote it.
I, I do have a question when.
A big, a big issue, so the, the main pond, the one that's behind the driving range in the ninth hole, is plus or minus 15, 20 feet deep in the center. The pond that we're, and it's much bigger, you know, square footage-wise, the one that we pump out of, of, by, is about 10 to 12 and it's three times smaller in square footage, so. That's typically the biggest issue in the past, from what I've been told, is that they just have to, which we did last year, you have to ration out the water, you know, situat- it's, who, who would think you're by the coast and you, you need water all the time?
Desalination.
It's not, yeah.
Do you have another question?
I do.
Yeah.
What are your plans to drive membership, to increase membership? Do you have a marketing plan that you're putting together? Is the golf committee staying engaged with you on that? They had a lot of, you had a great, a lot of great resources on that committee.
Yeah, um, a lot of social media, um, where I've been trying to pump that up, uh, a little bit. And it's amazing how word of mouth gets around. I had people talk to people at my wife's work about the clubhouse that I don't know and they were like, "Oh, I heard the clubhouse is coming, great, we can't wait to go there next year and go to golf and then go have it." That's like, you know, the 19th hole, right?
Sure, right, yeah.
I mean, that's why a lot of people join private golf clubs, is because they have that other part of the experience where we didn't have really any of that this year and not much of it in the past. Or if it was, it wasn't, you know, the cleanest, the nicest, the, the, the place you want to go to.
Well, it would be nice to look into, right, post-golf season, you know, what are those activities that can happen there from a family aspect after December 24th when you close down, right? And so what can you do to?
I've had a lot of people.
That revenue coming in.
Lease allows for year-round operation.
Yeah.
And it would allow for, you know, you're not going to have a 200-person wedding there, but wedding showers, baby showers.
Birthday parties.
Confirmation birthday parties, it's definitely big enough to handle those type of things.
I've had eight.
I think also to incorporate the activities on the course during the winter as well, aside from just a function, right?
We, we are hoping that whoever is operating this is going to be open year-round.
Yes.
So the people who are walking can go in there and get a cup of coffee, they can have lunch or breakfast. You know, that's, that's the.
And that person will roll up to you, correct? Or who, who will that?
They, they report to, to Ian.
Technically.
Okay, good.
And if there's a problem, it comes up to me, but Ian would be the, the point person on the day-to-day stuff going on.
Okay.
But on that note, I've had eight people also call in the last week and a half about functions in January, February. They think we're open already. And I'm like, I have to tell them important news, hey, the flooring's not down yet, we'll, we'll hire someone in mid-January, then you can start, once we hire them, then you can book events through them.
We need one of those signs, "Opening march."
Yeah, yeah. And I was like, you know, we're planning on opening.
But it's nice to get the phone calls.
Oh, a lot of people, yeah.
I have a question actually, just thinking, because I haven't unfortunately seen, um, is equipment included in the, uh, so all the tables, all the chairs? So is that going to be?
Kitchen equipment is, but.
Yeah, who knew the kitchen equipment was? Tables and chairs, is that going to be?
It's part of the bid, yeah.
Okay, okay, that was my question, part of that, okay, got it.
We, we didn't include it in the original numbers and the idea was, when we get to the end, if we have enough money, we'll buy, we'll buy that, if we don't, it goes in the bid, it's in the bid.
Add the same note, you also want, like, if they're going to just open a restaurant.
Right, want their aesthetic.
They want their own flavor on it, they want their own personality on it. We don't want to just be like, hey, this is what you have to use, we just spent $80,000 on tables and chairs, they don't like it. You know, so.
Okay.
The bar is really, the bar really is coming out.
The bar's great.
Nicely with a really nice view and.
The natural light in there is a hu- I mean, people are going to be a little wowed by the bar's, you know, situation over there, it's great.
Again, if the board wants to get on, you'd let me know, you know, you can get into the pro shop, but you'll need one of us to, to get over. We both looked at the lights over the bar that they specked and were kind of like, ugh, ugh, but that's actually pretty nice.
They look, they look good, we were a little concerned at first.
Concerned when they were specking them.
No, they look good.
They look pretty good.
Yeah.
I, I.
They're big woven basket lights, they're like probably three feet high, but the ceiling is so high, it's probably a 23, 24-foot ceiling.
Oh, wow.
Um, so, and all these, you know, eight-foot windows, so the lights come in, you see the river.
Nice, we need to come in, I can't wait to see it.
Yeah, it's going to be nice. Good.
Long time.
Long time coming.
Long time we've come, exactly.
One question on the, on the bid contract. Is there, is it a straight-up lease or is there any, um, uh, revenue participation?
Yes, yeah, so.
Both.
Both, okay, good job.
I was going to say, yes.
We've put a minimum.
30.
Lease requirement.
Yep.
And then people can ask if they can bid more, but we put a minimum and then I forget what the.
It's 2% at 100, every 100, 100, starting at $100,000, 2% gross back to the, you know, back to the town. So if they do $300,000 and six grand that comes back. And a 5% increase every year for five years.
So we're, we're really not looking to make a whole lot of revenue off the clubhouse in terms of what they're going to pass, we're looking to use that to draw people to the golf course and make the money out of it.
Yeah, we don't want to bid anybody, we want everyone to kind of bid. Want to make sure we get a great restaurant, but if they do awesome, we want to do a little, you know.
Sure, absolutely.
We don't want a huge profit sharing, because you don't want to scare people off either.
Yeah, you don't want to have a lot of, if someone comes in and says, "What have you done in the past?" The numbers don't support them, I come in and say, "I'm not going to spend all this money."
It's not a huge moneymaker per dollars on the rent, but it's a huge moneymaker for me with greens fees because people are going to want to come, and that's the big thing. And they want to return, not just coming once or twice, but as they go, "Oh, you know what? That clubhouse is great, we can go actually have a great dinner and a couple of drinks there and not have to go to the river shed or have to drive away, you know, go to downtown Harvard, so.
We know. We do.
Great job, thank you.
Go.
Yeah, the only thing I would say is it, is the expectation that it be a year-round restaurant? I mean, I think that's.
It's all open, yeah.
I think that's got to take priority.
It's a 10-month, it's a 10-month rent, a lease, so they would pay it 10 months and the other two months. They wouldn't have any rent, but they would be incentivized to be open.
It would be open.
A 10-month lease?
No, it's 10, they pay the rent over 10 months.
Well, they pay the rent over, they pay the rent over 10, 10 months. Well, they pay the rent over, they pay the rent over twelve, ten months. So it wouldn't, yeah.
I mean, I think it's a great space, I've seen it, it's beautiful, and it should draw people, whether you're playing golf or not playing golf, it should be a destination spot for, you know, in Situ, for, to have a nice dinner.
You know, Ian's tied a hair knot, there's one place to get breakfast in Situ, like a regular breakfast.
Jim's adamant on this, it's true, it's true.
That's the one meal I like to eat is breakfast, so, if you had a good breakfast in there, nice lunch, I tell you, this whole thing.
Or just, you know, even if they did brunch in the wintertime, and, you know.
So we don't really know how many it would seat though, right?
Eight-eight interior, thirty-four outside.
Eighty-eight interior.
Oh, thirty-six outside, but eighty-eight interior, thirty-six on the deck.
So obviously you're gonna have to balance, because that parking lot's not huge, right? So if you do a function that's not golf-related.
Park lot has a hundred and thirty-nine spots, that includes the six handicaps.
Just have to, yeah, I just want to be smart about that, too.
You're not gonna have a, a function on a Sunday in July.
Right.
At one o'clock, it's just not gonna work, so we're too many golfers.
Yeah, okay.
Well, great job.
Granted, on that note, evening functions will be easy, because the golf course is typically.
Correct.
The park lot's half-full at four o'clock, it's noon on a Saturday, Sunday, well, that's gonna be tough. But if you do a four o'clock, that's a lot.
The operator's gonna be like, I don't want to do a function, I actually gotta make my money off the golfers.
Right.
So there'll be a year of learning curve with them and me trying to balance what the best times are for them to do events outside of my events, you know, our events, so.
Will they be doing all the reservation handling, whoever's the?
Yep, it's their own.
Good.
Restaurant.
It's their restaurant. Good, can't wait to see who applies, yeah.
Yeah.
Good, well, you're doing a great job. It's certainly the buzz around town, and everybody's talking about where to walk golf again, so.
Love it, thank you. Happy holidays.
Same to you.
Well, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
First night's ordered early, so you have it. Oh, P N, bless me.
Ah, he's up here already, hello Drew.
He's ready to go.
Ready.
He's ready to leave.
Right, I'm out here.
And for the at-home audience, you are?
Yes, I am, Andrew Shaly, I'm the health director for the town.
A busy, busy person.
So.
You do nothing.
Basically, the mission statement has stayed the same. Our priorities, obviously COVID, COVID, COVID still, our other big priority is permit eyes that we're in the process of going through with Mike Mincello, and we've already got all of our food service establishments renewing on permit eyes right now, that's the first section that we're rolling out. And other than that, the budget is basically level-funded, I actually think you took five grand away from me out of some account, didn't you? But that's all contractual raises. I would like to give a, a shout-out to, you know, everybody in the town, all the departments and everything else working together with COVID. I know that's what we'll probably talk about right now for a little bit. Just the cooperation with the town administrator, with Bob, HR, the different departments, Linda down at the senior center. We've actually, our big thing right now is vaccination, 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 that's what we want to do, tell people. The Situ numbers are very, very good on vaccination. The vaccination numbers get updated every Thursday at five o'clock, as of last Thursday, our town-wide percentage was eighty-one percent. Of the town is two vaccinations of either the Moderna, the Pfizer, or one of the J and J. So that's fantastic. If you go down the age group, seventy-five plus, ninety-one percent, sixty-five to seventy-four, it's greater than ninety-five percent. Fifty to sixty-four, ninety-one percent, thirty to forty-nine, ninety percent, twenty to twenty-nine, eighty-one percent, sixteen to nineteen, ninety-one percent. Twelve to fifteen, seventy-nine percent. And our five to eleven-year-olds are at thirty-seven percent, fully vaccinated.
That just started though, really, right?
Yeah, the, the, the five to elevens just came on board, probably about a month ago. We also have given out close to four hundred booster shots up at the senior center last Monday and Tuesday, and this Monday and Tuesday, we gave a hundred out each day, so. We're still out there plugging away, and I'll answer any questions you have.
Well, I know we did get an email today from a lady who was concerned about there not being, people not masking at the senior center. What advice are you giving to people about?
I am giving advi, if you have underlying health conditions, and, well, first of all, you should all be vaccinated. If you're not vaccinated, you probably shouldn't be going out to settings like that, and if you are going out to settings like that, if you're not vaccinated, you're supposed to be wearing a mask. The DPH has come out with recommendations for mask-wearing right now. I didn't wear a mask today, I'm in here. I look at the, I look at a lot of different factors with the recommendation. If I had asthma, if I had any other underlying health conditions, I'd be masked up right now. Even with my vaccination and my booster, I would be masked up. So if you have any type of underlying health conditions, you should be wearing a mask when you're out in public. If you're down at the senior center, I just read you the numbers of the number of people who are vaccinated in the age group that's gonna be down there. Grade sixty-five to seventy-five, sixty-five to seventy-four, greater than ninety-five percent. If people feel comfortable wearing a mask going in there and they want to wear a mask, by all means, put a mask on. If you have any underlying health conditions and you're gonna be going down there, put a mask on. I'm not a big, you know, Situ has a mask mandate, Cohasset doesn't have a mask mandate, Marshfield has a mask mandate. It just, it sends a convoluted message, in my opinion. I'd rather try to be consistent.
Well, and I guess it's kind of hard to be the mask police.
Well, that's.
Or your, you know, wherever you are. And we, we had that issue, and I'll just say to the public that we had a disagreement with the school committee over whether or not we would have a mask mandate at town meeting, and the board decided that we did not want to have a mandate, but we requested respectfully that people wear a mask at town meeting, and they pretty much did.
I'd say about seventy-five to eighty-five percent of the people had masks on at the town meeting.
So, and nobody wants to get into a confrontation with anyone else. And if, my advice is, if you, if you're in a place where someone is not wearing a mask and it upsets you, leave.
I'll put a mask on yourself.
Or put a mask on, right.
We've been very consistent from the beginning that we were gonna follow the state mandates, we were not gonna go all on our own. We're trying to be cognizant of, we don't want you to, if you go to the council on aging, you have to wear a mask, but then if you go to the library, you don't, or vice versa. People going back and forth, so we've been trying to just stay consistent with what the state is requiring. We couldn't have asked for a more leveled person than Drew as our health inspector during this, I mean, when we were gonna open the library, he was up there meeting with the library staff, going over everything, the town department, so. We've, we've really tried to be consistent on what our message has been to people. And, you know, you have any questions, Drew, we'll give you his cell phone number, and you can call him directly. Really, I think the only drawback of Drew being our health inspector is Nancy's snack budget has probably doubled. Drew's been here.
He's a snacker, huh?
I have a, I have a sweet tooth.
But really, you know, we've just tried to be consistent with following the state mandates, so that people aren't getting confused, if they go here, they go there, they go here, they go there, so.
One other thing I'd like to add is, we are getting a lot of calls at the office about, are we getting any tests? We are not getting any tests. The president came out and said that they will be mailing out test kits to individuals in mid-January, but you're gonna have to request that to actually have it sent out to you.
State did say, did send, or is sending home tests to about a hundred and two municipalities. Fortunately, our COVID increases were not sufficient enough to qualify for those, so we are not part of that program that we will get.
I guess that's a good thing, I don't know.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well, I think it also has to do with economic disadvantage, and we're.
So Quincy's getting them, but Wayman didn't.
Quincy, Randolph, Rockland, and Brockton, I believe, are the four communities that got them.
And they're the highest increases right now of COVID, so.
But thank you, thank you so much for all you've done.
Well, I, I'd like to thank, you know, I, I'd like to really give a big shout-out to Eileen Scotty, our public health nurse, I mean, she's budgeted for eight hours a week, and.
I know, I saw that.
For two years, she's been probably doing, at least a year and a half, she's probably been doing close to forty hours a week, and it's all been covered by COVID money that we get coming in, but she has just done an unbelievable, we're so, so lucky to have Eileen at the helm there, and, you know, Joan and Teresa and Erica are in my office also, just, they've done a great job, so I can't say enough about them.
Appreciate it. Questions from the board?
None, just great job, I mean, this is a crazy time, and you've really done spectacular.
Jim starts his work here, and he has a big storm, and then you start here, we have COVID, so.
We get stopped, we both came from Quincy, so it's gonna stop hiring people from Quincy.
Can I just ask a quick question, sorry, it's just my ignorance, and, and thank you for everything that you do, Drew. Has the social service position always rolled up to the Board of Health? That's new, isn't it? I thought it used to roll into the senior center.
No, it's never been under the senior center.
You got, you got heads bobbing all different ways behind you, so.
I appreciate it, it did go to the council on aging, and then it was split between the council on aging and Board of Health, and then it finally landed in the Board of Health.
Okay, so I'm not crazy.
You're all, I'm not sure about that.
Heads are going all to the ways back there, they're up, they're down.
Anyway, all right.
Well, thank you for that sidebar, all of you, yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Drew.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you, too.
Okay, council on aging. Linda Hayes.
Linda could have answered that, just kidding.
Still can.
Hi, everybody.
So you've had a big year.
It's been, I have had a big year, I've had a wonderful year, certainly more exciting than past years.
Yes.
Positive. Nice to be showing up with some highlights and not some challenges, or necessarily, so. Very happy to be here.
This is a new track, isn't it?
It is, it is. Uh, but, so, and as many of you know firsthand, of course, we are busy with many things at the senior center. Since our soft opening in April, we've been cultivating the new building setting. Since, since we moved in really in March, people began coming in as COVID was lifted back in the end of May and June. We have been developing and offering activities, you know, gradually in earnest since June, with some gradual scheduling, increase in offerings to meet demand, especially as more and more people have come in to provide some variety as well. More exercise classes, which we have needed, the demand has been great there. Other classes, other workshops, something for everyone, because everyone is different and has different interests. So trying to spread it out in the building. Volunteers, that's been a really wonderful uptick in being able to use so many volunteers. We have really since our opening, brought on fifty-five or more actually volunteers in a few different capacities, certainly the front desk is and has been the main one, they're busy. It's become a job, kind of. They are the front line, certainly, and, and have had to have more training and learn more, certainly about the computer. But just in terms of communicating policy that we've really had to try to develop as it happens because of the demand and how to do that. We originally started having to restrict numbers maybe because of COVID, and then it was just the demand that we had to meet. So had to find ways to ask people to register early, to cap it, to have a waitlist, which continues in many of those activities. Maybe we've seen a little bit of a falloff, there's some that may have become reduced because of people going to Florida. And then naturally, I think just recently, we're probably seeing a slight downturn in some people coming into the building for classes, especially because they're somewhat crowded. We're still restricting to a point, so the rooms have walls, and we try to keep it to what is reasonable in those spaces. But we have seen a little bit of, not a downturn, I can't call it that, but just a few less, a few less sign-ups. Some of our other volunteers, activities, they're facilitating activities for us, as well as picking donations up from the supermarket or Panera once a week on a Monday night, which is very nice. Our shine counselors, of course, which we have always had help with, and they just had a busy time, six weeks of open enrollment for insurance changes for Medicare, so that's a busy time. And the kitchen, so that is, that has a lot of volunteers, actually, I, I'm not even certain of the number, but we probably field six or seven a day, some overlap multiple days, and some of you have been there, so that's wonderful. We love it. We started the lunch program September second, so that has seen a wonderful increase over time. I can give you some numbers overall, so in November, just check-ins alone to the senior center, so not just anything in particular, two thousand five hundred and eighty-seven. In October, it had been two thousand four hundred and seventy-eight, and in September, two thousand four hundred and forty-nine. So it, it is increasing in that regard for various things. Average attendance, I guess, a day from June to August, it was between sixty and eighty a day, and in November, it was a hundred and thirty a day. So that's on average, so. Certain days are busier, Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays a little bit busier, afternoons a little quieter. So we are trying, when we schedule things, to maybe start to spread it out into the afternoons if we can. Exercise, for instance, in November, over a thousand check-ins, and that's over two hundred people coming in for exercise. We have several exercise classes, we've added some because we've had to try to distribute, but also because of variety, so we have some nice new ones. Daily lunch, thirty to forty-five, we're really starting to work more toward the forty-five number. Instead of restricting it, we started restricting it maybe to forty, forty-two. A day like Tuesday's soup and sandwich, so it's a little bit lighter, and maybe thirty to thirty-two or thirty-five. I don't know why, it's a great.
Jim likes the meatloaf.
Great soup and sandwich.
Meatloaf.
Or part roast.
He's been advertising it.
Everybody loves meatloaf, nobody makes it. In September, we had two hundred and ten people come to lunch. Those are individual, unduplicated people over the course of time. In October, a hundred and eighty-four, in November, two hundred and six, so again, it's, it's, it's up and down. So it's been wonderful, needless to say, numbers-wise. Energy, good energy in the building, everybody's happy. We have had some additional use of the building, which has also been a, a nice positive as much as we've been able to at this point, and Rotary sponsored partnership, they had some dinner speaker events that our population was, was invited to, and really made up most of the participation, but they were nice speaker events with the dinner. American Legion had the Veterans Day luncheon there, which was great, and the food pantry actually did something outside following it, so that was a really nice.
That was the place.
Combination. The Situ Police Department, they did some training in the evening, but they also had their Christmas luncheon last weekend, so.
Oh, nice.
That was ninety people that they had for luncheon, almost ninety officers.
Does Fred do the cooking?
Fred did not do the cooking for that, or for the veterans, so.
He didn't do the veterans, but, so people bring in other caterers?
The police have used the same caterer for, or chef for twenty-five years, actually, so that was a good thing. Also a good thing, he actually knew Fred and had worked with him previously, so he knows his way around the kitchen, and that worked out well. So the more we can meet for that, and we could maybe rely on as backup if we need it, would be good, too, for other things that come up that are extra. The vaccine booster clinics, of course, that Drew mentioned, and some town committee, department meetings and things, you all had one with the school committee, and so we are open to being able to do that, and eventually, hopefully, I'll be before you, and we can come up with a plan that maybe could provide some revenue, and maybe some extra activities that might be private. We want to bring the community in and give them opportunities, of course, which they have had through some of these, but there could be more. So operational expenses, I mean, we're, we're still working on that. Thankful to facilities for helping so much with, I guess, learning, the learning curve on, on maintaining the building. They have taken on some of the utility expenses. They are also supplying the janitorial help at this point, so we have had the ubiquitous Nick, and we love him, and we'd keep him if we could, but we can't, so, I guess. So we are expecting to have a janitor that we will share with recreation, and that will be great. Hasn't happened yet, and we're all chipping in, but the budget is essentially level-funded from the FY twenty-two, but of course, we haven't seen a full year of those numbers either. Finally, I guess, well, all existing positions that I, I have had on the books are now filled, and I have had a hard time with some staff leaving and shortages, and just not being able to find the right people. But my staff right now, great fits, capable additions to the team, I'm very happy, it's wonderful. Even our drivers are back to a full quorum at four or five, so it's, it's terrific. In earlier discussions, of course, about the building, the one area that I knew would require more personnel was the kitchen, because it was a new program. So we have our chef, and we're very happy with our chef. It was bare bones, which I know you noted in the beginning last year when I came about the budget request, so that has proven to be true, he's doing it, but not without the help of volunteers, and some good ones, really, who, who can support him. But he really could use, we could use, a consistent kitchen assistant to not only support him, to learn a bit, I mean, he may need to take a sick day sometime or go on vacation. So we really could use that. Still using volunteers, especially in the front of the house, maybe not so much in the back. And to be honest, even the dishwashing on a consistent basis, that's a tough, that's a, it's a hard enough job that not every, it's not appropriate for all the volunteers to do.
Is that what this hostess role is? Is it really the assistant?
It is, it is more or less a kitchen, back-of-the-house assistant, someone who would prep for Fred, learn the ropes a little bit with him, and also be available to what the kitchen requires, and to know the operation of the kitchen, yes. So the program's a strong addition, we couldn't be happier with it, really, right out of the gate, it's successful, and it's really essential to our offerings. It's, it's doing what it's supposed to do, offering social connection, but also just so much more opportunity and energy because of that. Just, it really makes people happy. It's nutrition, it's, it's what it should be, but it's a little bit. It's nutrition. It's what it should be, but it's a little bit more elevated and I think that's nice. In addition, we did ask to increase his hours to twenty, just because he probably is working that and more. And I just think it's appropriate for him. Otherwise, the cafe will continue to use both tax work-off volunteers as well as other volunteers who are helping out with that. And we'll continue with the lunch servers and others in the kitchen. And also another increase of five hours for the activities and volunteer coordinator. So she's been at twenty-five. That position has been at twenty-five since the inception. We've always been right up against it really with all the staff hours. So it's a small increase that she's willing to do and she's a great fit and I think I would really like having her that much more. And that will help us with some of the communication that we still need to get out for people and some things that are still developing. Transportation services are great. They're increasing, you know, the GATRA budget. We have more than sufficient funds from that right now to cover transportation coordinator and the drivers' salaries and the operation expenses, so that's all good. And the new V N is doing all our local rides, so a little bit of advertising. But that's, that's about.
And GATRA is not the sloop, right?
No, GATRA is the sloop.
It is.
But it's the public side.
Got it. Thank you.
They operate that completely in partnership a little bit with us, but that's not the funding that we receive for our services.
Any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I think the question of if we build it, will they come was answered.
Yes, absolutely.
I was lucky to be there last week, I think it was. And the activities that are going on there are unbelievable. It's, you walk in, there's people in the front area. You walk upstairs, there's a yoga class. There's three guys working out. There's two people playing pool. There's a class with about forty people making box gardens.
Oh, the boxwood trees, yes. That was a good day.
Just on a computer. So every room in this space is being used. And there's fifty or sixty people for lunch. There's six people playing bocce. It's thirty-five degrees out. So it is really, what we have to do is figure out how to expand it, right? Because there's more, you've got like a waiting list for stuff.
Right.
So we've got to figure out how to get those activities and get more people utilizing the great space and doing it. You're doing a great team.
Ideas in abundance. It's just coordinating and yes, fitting them all in and.
And you hit the nail on the head. There's just a positive energy in there. Everybody's happy. They're all, you know, it's not this dark kind of gloomy piece. Everyone's interacting and conversing and it's really spectacular what's going on.
Thank you, Tony.
I was really impressed.
It's great. Wonderful. Thank you. Thanks for saying that.
We're glad during the northeastern in November, we had thirty, forty people in there one of those days using the facilities.
That was nice.
Getting warm, charging their phones, having coffee. So there's that whole other dimension that we thought about when we built it and it was nice to see that being used for that at the same time, too.
And the veterans' agent is up there also where he has a nice space to have his meetings.
I can tell you the guys at the coffee shop, they can tell you when they're going to lunch. Yep, not this week. Next week there's a lunch we're gonna go to and they follow the menu and they show up for the lunch.
Some new faces. Very nice.
Wouldn't get, Fred does a great job and I don't tell you, he's been there, some of you have been there. For five bucks, it's amazing what they get for lunch and to see the people there again. Some people, it might be their only meal, but they're all happy. They're all enjoying it.
They're happy.
Mrs. Bank was there on yesterday. I was up there yesterday with the police chief, fire chief and the DPW director. We volunteered, went up and served and she did complete the clean plate club, so she got dessert afterwards. But people really just, they just come in, they find a seat, doesn't matter who's at the table and they enjoy each other's company and have their lunch.
And the volunteers make it special. You know, it's like you're at a restaurant.
They do.
They clear the plates, they serve you.
It's an experience and they're proud of that.
Get tips. It's not quite like a restaurant.
But they're really proud to do what they do.
Oh, yeah.
It's wonderful.
It's a lot of fun.
I think the challenge is really expanding.
Yes.
You know, the capacity of it and getting, because there's a lot of people that use it all the time and that there's people that don't get to use it because there's only so much.
Yes, so trying to play that balance.
There are people waiting when Linda opens the door. They go there for their coffee in the morning and, you know, they come in and they sit down, they have their coffee as soon as she opens. So we're gonna keep doing what we're doing. We're walking before we're running. We'll expand our program over time and, you know.
But you don't have to be signed up for a program to go into the building, right?
You do not. There's a.
You can just go and sign.
Social.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm imagining there are a lot of people who think, oh, I have to sign up for a class or I have to sign up for something in order to go in. But if you just want to drop in and, you know, look around the building.
Yes.
Yeah.
And the cafe, the library areas, there's always people just in there having a cup of coffee, enjoying.
And I'll be on. How long is the cafe open for? I mean, in terms of like, get a coffee.
Technically, it's all day, honestly. And we also had thought that the cafe, at least the coffee part, would be a little bit of revenue, but honestly, it's free coffee. The friends offered to fund that and people love coffee and they love free coffee and that's a draw to just sit and enjoy. It's not like a timetable. Come on. Eight fifteen, the doors open. Thank you for your support, honestly. I'm glad we're here.
Great. And any budget questions?
No, no, I don't.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Linda. It's all good. Happy holidays.
Very much. Thanks very much. That's so nice. You too.
Now, I can't say last but not least because there's still Commission on Disabilities to come, but Maura, Nick.
Good, how are you?
How are you?
Could you introduce yourselves to TV land, please?
Sure. Whoops, I'm making a phone call.
Hang up on them.
Is that what I just did?
I did.
My name's Maura Glancy. I'm Citrus Recreation Director.
Nick Lombardo, Assistant Director.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's nice to see you all.
Nice to see you.
Thanks for staying late.
Thank you.
And sitting through everything.
It's interesting.
You learned a lot.
It is my town and I love listening to all the.
You can come every week.
Well, I might watch you all the time, too. I'd like to just take this opportunity, if I may, to thank the people who helped us with the calls to the North Pole. It's an important event that happens every year and it's been happening for decades. And so just bear with me just for a second.
You sound like you were one of them. You sound a little hoarse.
I'm a little hoarse. I have a little cold. It's not cold, I got tested, so I'm good. And that's it, the end of it. So anyway, just bear with me just for a second. I'd just like to introduce to you some of the people who helped us. Brian Sullivan, Mike Connor, Al Elliott, John Murphy, Marty Gagin, Pat Kearney, Andrew Goodrich, Paul Papadonis, Paul Norton, Tony Vignani, Al Klosowski, Rob McCourt.
Al? I'm sorry.
Bill Burkhead, Bob Dutch, Mark Thompson. Al was in the hospital, but he did raise his hand and he raises his hand every year. Unfortunately, we lost him last week and we're gonna miss that legend. Also, the late Joe Norton's family are now participating on a yearly basis. Kim, Joe's daughter, reached out to me and asked if she could be involved and she made all the goodie bags. So it's a nice support. But the helpers made a hundred and seventy-five children in this town very excited and happy. So that's one thing. And then would you like to introduce who the, Mr. C, oh, yeah.
Yeah, so our Mr., we have a Mr. C's award, who was named after Konstantin Konstantinidis, who's been our soccer instructor for thirty-three plus years. And at the same time, actually, this year, he's announced his retirement. So we're gonna obviously keep the program going under his name, but with somebody else. But the winner of the Mr. C's Award, Community Spirit Award this year will go to Bob Drew, who's basically, you know, he's created this mastermind of the youth center these past however many years it's been. And there's no one that really deserves this award more than Bob and what he's done for the community and the programs that they've done. So thank you, Bob, and congratulations.
That is a big deal.
Yeah, thirty-three years of every single Saturday for nothing.
Wow.
From eight in the morning till four or five in the afternoon, for six weeks, it's incredible what he's done, what he's done for soccer.
Yeah, we've met with some people who we believe is a good fit for the program going forward. So we're hoping to finalize some things with them within the next few weeks. Because it's a program that, I mean, we take in two hundred plus registrations.
Forty registrations.
And so it is, it is our biggest program really altogether, besides the ones that we run in the summer. So we're really hoping to continue, you know, in his legacy and hoping we can continue it strong, so.
So what's going on other than that, Maura?
Well, we're excited where we are. We love where we are.
The campus is great, isn't it?
I love it. And we do, and we're so happy to have the COA there. It's really added a lot of life to the area and we were there for, what, three or four years by ourselves? And it's, we had to go through all the construction and that was nice having them around. But I really love seeing the people walking around and using the campus. And sometimes Linda says, do you have any room over there for a Zumba class? Yep, come on over. So we communicate and we work together really well with the COA. They are their own entity and we are too, but we do give back the services to the community. And, you know, as she does, we try to pinpoint the programs for the community and what they want. And I think we have a good handle on it right now. All our programs are selling out. We have waitlists and, you know, we could expand, but then again, you know, we only can do so much and I think the people like us.
Yeah, it's great to see everybody really, you know, putting their trust in us to keep everybody safe, but, you know, run these programs at the same time. So, I mean, we were a little bit surprised to see some of these programs that don't normally fill up. I mean, they filled up right away, you know, in the winter. So it was, it was a, it was a good feeling to see that everybody, you know, wants to, wants to come out and experience the rec, so.
Yeah, it's more and more so.
And then you got the food pantry over there now, too.
Yeah. Yeah, we once in a while will take a walk around, say hi to people and they do the same to us. And the Veterans Gym is just thriving. There's always somebody up there, you know, I'm going by tonight. The lights are on. I know who's in there and it's nice to know that people are in there using it all the time. So the Veterans Gym is a really nice.
And all the improvements have been done there now, the elevator, all the.
Oh, yeah.
I've never, I've never gone in there.
We walked, we painted the walls because they were a little crummy after the school left. And the backboards, so it looks a little shinier in there.
New floor.
New floor.
The new flooring.
Oh.
With the elevator?
Oh, oh, yeah, in the lobby area. And the floor downstairs came out beautiful in the foyer. Remember when you saw it, they came in and they refixed it and it's shiny and beautiful now, so we're very happy. Excuse me?
So they'll have to go back and check it out again?
Yeah, you will. You'll like it. Yeah.
On your way to the library.
In the senior center.
For the coffee. Maura, what are you doing?
It's constant tonight.
It's always somebody's turn.
Do you guys have any questions for us?
Yeah, I mean, you're absolutely right. All I ever hear are people saying, you know, talking about the wonderful programs. Like, oh, yeah, I was that pickup ball boy. Was that competitive? They're pretty serious about that.
We're getting some young blood in there.
It's pretty serious in there.
Twenty-year-olds and I'm playing, I'm like, ooh.
Oh, no, it's great stuff. Budget looks completely level. I don't know if we invited you specifically, but we're having a January fourth meeting with, to discuss all the coastal and beach projects that are on our plate. And we've invited the Beach Commission to come and the Coastal Resources Commission. So if you're interested, we're, yeah, we're trying to just get a handle on what do we have coming up. And I know mine at BK saw us in the plan from beach sticker revenue. So we had a big increase in beach sticker revenue this year, yes?
Yes, and the year before because of COVID. It was the only thing to do to.
Yeah, so was it out of town or was it?
I think they sold immediately, the out of town.
The out of town, they sold out in less than an hour.
Wow.
And then Al Marok Wednesday, too, from my field, that's a different one. Yeah. We're looking to replace a lot of our antiquated equipment that we need to just replace. Looking into new beach chairs maybe or.
For the lifeguards? Yeah.
And just make it a little shinier.
Yeah.
Responsible out there because it's a big responsibility for them.
Yeah, it is.
Last summer, they had quite a few saves. Not as big as the summer before. Well, the summer of twenty-one, twenty, twenty. They had a, they had a couple of big saves. It was three young people that were saved, thirteen-year-olds. And then last summer, it was just, they call them small saves, but, you know, they pull them out of the water and.
No save's a small save.
They're all big saves, yeah, they are. The lifeguards are doing a really nice job. If they're not, just let me know, please.
It was great, too. I mean, last year, we were able to bring back our, you know, annual training that we do on the beach with Chandra Rosa. So that was good to have that back and be able to do that because the year before, obviously, we couldn't do it really with COVID, so.
Yeah, our lifeguard director has retired. We're going into another lifeguard director this year.
And you have one.
We have an assistant one and we're thinking about making her a co-director with somebody else, so it'll be a nice mix. She's a schoolteacher in town and she does a nice job, so she's ready to step up. But they can't do it seven days a week, so she'll do three or four days and the other one will do three or four days. It's always nice to have a supervisor watching over them.
Yes.
And they are children, young kids, young adults.
Right. I, is just, is there anything that you foresee that you need that should be on our radar for budgeting in the future? I mean, I know you said you feel like you have a pretty robust programming, but what about your facilities?
Well, I think we take good care of our facility. We've done a couple of floors over underneath the gym. We made new programming space under there.
As I say, like any, any space needs for programming?
We're clearing out a room at the end that has been packed with a couple of things from the school and we're trying, we're gonna move that out. I talked to Jim about that and I just have to coordinate with Bob Dillon over at the school to get their stuff out. I'm gonna redo the floor and have another programming area. So we can have our painting and painting program and different programs and that sort that they can leave their equipment in. One room is dedicated to like a karate type of school, only it's ours. That's very popular, sells out all the time. And then we'll have another room that will be dedicated to sort of like painting or photography that we offer, something that has that kind of flair to it.
Very good, getting the players. I'm asking because you know where I'm going because I want to finish what we did not complete at some point and I don't know where that is on our radar. So the whole Gates Gym, the whole bottom level that we pulled out of, that we pulled out of the Senior Center plan. You know, I'm just curious where we're putting that on our radar to complete at some point. We have a half-completed building.
Right now, it's not on my radar until we get that whole project done, signed off and cleaned up and then we can come back and be visitor. But right now, the board didn't want to include it. It was too expensive, so we moved on to the next thing, which she's talking about is the A Wing off the back. They'll have the whole, they will have the whole first floor, all those classrooms in the back. But in terms of the cost of that, that was probably the largest cost for that gym work, was taking all that.
A lot of runoff, yeah.
There's a lot of, a lot of concrete work, a lot of, you know.
Like all that piping and all that junk down there.
Probably the most expensive portion of the gym project and that's why the board took it out. So right now, it's not on our radar unless the board decides at some point they want to put it back in.
I think it needs to be on the capital plan somewhere. Anyhow.
Well, I'll end on a good note. So I look at the budget and it literally is the two of you, right? So the two of you run this huge program that brings joy to thousands and thousands of people in this town. And similar to the Senior Center we just before, this, it's spectacular what we're able to do and what you guys are able to do in this town to provide services to a huge amount of citizens. You know, from four-year-old to, you know.
Me.
To you. No, but you've got seniors playing pickle. I mean, you've got the whole gamut of every citizen in this town has some sort of, or can have some sort of function that you guys are running and it's spectacular. I know, I know you didn't run through all the numbers like you have in past years, but it's, it's, it's just off the charts in terms of what you guys offer and what people are actually doing and they're selling out left and right. So I think at some point, like I mentioned at the Senior Center, we really have to look at, you guys know the holes and you guys know the things that if you had another set of hands, what you could do. And we've got to see if, you know, to expand the services that we provide and get more people involved because guitar lessons sold out or. because guitar lessons sold out or, or, you know, there's not enough Pilates or whatever it happens to be.
Yeah, we're fortunate enough to use the golf, too. I mean, we're over there with Ian, too.
Everywhere, everywhere.
We try to touch us, everybody, everybody but the assessor usually. We did a math one time and it surprised me how many other departments we touch. We work with the police and the fire.
Right.
You know, and it's, and it's really nice. We have a safety day in the summertime and I just, my favorite thing is to touch all the other departments and bring them in with us.
I mean, that doesn't even include the beach, right? Everybody goes to the beach, so every citizen. So anyways, I know I speak for everybody saying you guys, you guys are doing a great, great job. And we've really upped our game in terms of the high school field, spectacular, right? Tons of use.
Yeah, that was done, really, really well done. I mean, the design was just.
And I like the fact in your plan that you're working on the grass fields, too, to get those refurbished and get those back up to a.
That was a promise. I don't forget my promises.
So good work, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
I said you two have a happy holiday.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
So Commission on Disabilities.
Thank you.
I don't.
We'll just do that.
I mean, Mrs. Brodsky was at the advisory board last week. Their big goal for fiscal twenty-three is to have a disability awareness event. They've had to cancel the last two. They're bringing state agencies, vendors and things for people who work with people with disabilities. Two thousand and one, they allotted a thousand dollars to the recreation department for devices. Children with disabilities, they provided funds to the library to be used for books for those with disabilities, audiobooks and C pens. The IXL program at the school department chose books. The commission supported those purchases. So they provide support across all the sectors. People with disabilities, they're asking for support for their budget, which is the same as this current fiscal year.
Well, thank you to all of those, yes. They work hard.
They work hard remotely.
Yes.
Zooming away.
So next, Discuss Vote Wind Turbine Curtailment Agreement. Mr. Boudreau, would you like to give us an update on where we are after we had the meeting last two weeks ago to?
The board voted two weeks ago to request a curtailment from December twenty-second until town meeting. We had to make sure that Situate Wind would agree to that curtailment. They have. They provided a curtailment agreement which is identical to the curtailment agreement that you signed for the summer hours with the exception that the numbers are different because that's what they generate more wind in the winter time. So the only thing for the board to do tonight is to execute the curtailment agreement with Situate Wind and it will start tomorrow night.
Or stop tomorrow night.
Wind will be off from eleven to si, eleven PM to six AM starting tomorrow night.
Did you talk to the county council?
She's reviewed it.
No, no, she said that we are within our.
Right.
Our rights to defer this income.
Yes. But we did it before, yes. So do I pass practice?
Well, we did it for, to a certain dollar amount. So now we're extending that dollar amount.
I think if you want to make it permanent, you would need to go back to town meeting.
Okay.
Correct, but this is a.
All right, if she's given an opinion, then that's.
So, um, Jim, the, the number, that bottom line number is a hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars. Making some assumptions about metering credits that I don't even understand.
Estimates on power production and all those things.
It'll be based on the actual, that's just the estimate, yes.
But to be frank about it, the estimate they gave us for the summertime curtailment was pretty on the money.
Pretty darn good, yeah.
Yeah, so I think we can assume that.
It'll be fairly close.
Yeah. So does the board have any questions or comments or?
Well, what is the, what was the summer number again? Ninety?
Ninety something.
So this is going to total two hundred thousand dollars?
That's what I put together.
When it's done?
Yeah.
And we make about two fifty?
Roughly, yeah.
Good.
Just need a motion to execute the agreement. The curtailment agreement with Situate.
Can we just review the times again and the directions? Did we decide what were the hours?
We did a previous meeting. It's eleven to six.
Eleven AM to six, eleven PM to six AM, period.
Off. Up, up until town meeting day. Now until that.
Anyone have anything to say that will be useful to this conversation?
I'll throw my fifty cents worth in.
All right.
For over, um, twenty-sixth Hughes Road. Three nights last week, the turbine was very loud. Last night, I couldn't get to sleep and I was awake from twelve fifteen to three fifteen. So I'm annoyed that this is taking the game. But, so there is a need for it near around.
Well, I'm going to tell you, we are going to put an article on the town meeting warrant to give the town the opportunity to weigh in on it, give town meeting an opportunity to weigh in on it. And I would suggest that the proponents of taking it down, shutting it off, et cetera, it's going to be an opportunity for you, you to make your case to the town. But, um, you know, just so you know, we have an obligation, as much as you don't want to hear about it, to, um, to not get ourselves sued and to not incur an incredible burden on the town. And as much as you might want to point to other places where windmills have been shut down, that those have been different arrangements. And so we do have a contract with Situate Wind. So, um, but I encourage you to do everything you can to go out and, you know, educate the public about your point of view. And you will have your chance to make your case at town meeting. So, yes, ma'am?
I'm Casper, one forty-second Road.
Yes.
I prefer, I mean, it's been a lot. And you said that there's only a few people that complain, but I.
I did not say that, madam.
I mean, in the past.
I, I never said that.
I.
All right.
It's been said.
All right.
That.
It's been said.
Few people complain.
All right.
And I, I've walked around myself. Board of House said the same thing. I've talked to many people. Mr. Bagnani, I've talked to many people. It doesn't bother anybody. But there are people that are bothered by it and they, they remain silent because they've seen that nothing has happened and that, you know, people and people have been mistreated. Um, and just a comment about something that was said earlier, that a commitment was made and that people don't forget commitments from the two thousand and nine planning board meeting where Mr. Merkiva was there. His house, he bought the land in two thousand and six, his house was there. He moved in in two thousand and eight. He had serious concerns for his family, their health from that wind turbine. And he was reassured by one of the selectmen, Rick Murray, that whatever happened, that it would be taken care of by the town, that they would be protected. That was in two thousand and nine. And we're here in two thousand and twenty-one still trying to get protection. And I don't even suffer as much as the Merkivas do. And talking about wind direction, it doesn't matter. It bothers us all different directions all year long. And it's bad for our, not to be able to speak.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, anyone else?
Would you like a motion?
Yes, please.
Uh, I don't know if we have one, but I have moved that the select board execute the second voluntary curtailment agreement as presented by the town administrator to go into effect upon execution and to remain into, uh, into effect until next town meeting.
Oh, you're second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Four zero motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you want to talk about, you want to put hours in there or?
It's, no.
You already did.
We already did.
Just making sure.
Yep.
Merry Christmas all.
Same to you.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're going to spend more money.
Water treatment plant financing options.
Now, Chair, would you like to pull up a report of the meeting? I know that select and district has interested us to go over it.
Yeah, I don't think this is of major. Did you have, you wanted, if you want to talk about it.
Why are you looking at me?
No, no, because you seem to be ready to say something and I didn't want to just move along with not giving you the opportunity.
No, I'm fine. I was gonna say, I'm fine. That's fine by me. If it's, if it's imminent, right?
I'll go twice with.
All right, so Nancy, thank you. Give us more time to study it.
Financial policies that we still haven't done. But thank you for the summary. It was.
Yes. Coastal Advisory Commission appointment?
Oh, it's just for the coastal, um, the new board member. I mean, the new, our new coastal officer.
Move to appoint Corey Miles, Coastal Management Officer, as a standing member of the Coastal Advisory Commission until his successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is complete within thirty days.
Second. Second by Ms. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero motion carries. Discuss Vote Close, April eleventh, twenty twenty-two Annual and Special Town Meeting Warrant.
Mr. Boudreau has just passed these out. Passed them down.
I was gonna say, do we have a copy?
So as you can see, a list says thirty-one plus because the Planning Board, number twenty-four, zoning bylaws for marijuana establishments, they're going to do that in four, possibly five separate articles. Now, we can discuss them all at once, but you have to do them in a particular order. So I'm not sure exactly how many that's going to be. And you'll see down the bottom, there's a petition article to shut off the wind turbine. So we have a placeholder for wind turbine curtailment. The board will have to make a decision whether you want to leave that in there or just default right to the.
Citizens.
Curtailment, you'll have to do that tonight. But there's also a bunch of other zoning articles and.
So is planning going to propose to lift the moratorium?
So the discussion was back last year, there was a citizen petition to allow for the sale, commercial sale of marijuana in Situate. It wasn't drafted correctly. It didn't do what it needed to do. So really, the decision was made to work with them, have the planning board draft something to put before the town. So if the town wished to legalize commercial marijuana, it would be done correctly. And that's what they're doing here. They're not, I don't think they're proposing it or, or pushing it. They're just trying to draft something for the town. So if the town wishes to do it, it's done in the correct manner.
Okay.
I think that was the board's position also.
Right.
They at least wanted something that was correct to, to vote on.
And for there to be time to have hearings.
They will have, they're, they're, what I understand, they're going to have one meeting in January to discuss all the zoning articles. And then in February will be the planning board public hearing on the zoning articles.
Right.
Do you have the dates for that January meeting yet or?
No. County's mentioned it today in our development meeting.
We do have a joint meeting with the planning board sometime in January.
The eleventh.
And that was specifically to talk about the.
Master plan.
The master plan implementation committee. But if we're having a joint meeting at that point, would it make any sense to include that discussion?
Really depend on how long you think the, the master plan meeting is going to take. I wouldn't hazard a guess.
Yeah. Well, I think the idea of that was to get that committee formed and to agree between the planning board and the select board as to the makeup of that implementation.
Might not just go take the time to get an agreement between the select and the planning board. So if, if you don't think it's going to be that long, then we can put a discussion of this on there, but I think that could be a long.
It could be too long.
Could be long, I, yeah. Because you're going to really talk, I think, about a lot of the specifics of the master plan and how the town is going to implement those. I think it could be a long discussion.
Okay.
And I don't think this will be ready until.
Yeah, probably not. You're right. Okay.
And also you see on there, we have a potential bylaw to deal with the issue of camping.
Camping, yeah.
And town property.
Oh, that's good, yeah.
Should we put a, an article on here for us for the turbine?
It is. It's there, but.
Well, that's a petition.
The curtailment.
There's a, there is one sixteen wind.
Oh, okay.
And that's again, does the board want to develop something or do they want to just take that off and default to the petitioners that want to shut it off? And that, that'll be up to you guys.
I mean, I, I absolutely think we should keep a placeholder for the curtailment because I don't think that as drafted, the petition is actionable, for one thing. And if we are going to do the homework that we promised to do and actually present something for people to consider that's actionable from us, then we should have the opportunity to do that.
I, I agree with you on the petition, the way it's drafted. I don't think it's actionable, but that's my opinion. Whether or not the board wants to put something is up to you. You tell them what you want, we'll draft it.
I think we've pledged to do that.
Yep.
So, and we can always remove it if we don't have a recommendation, right?
So just so I can tell Nancy to start working on it. It would be for a year-round curtailment from eleven to six. Is that what the board's looking to put on the? I need to, I need to know. The board's going to have to let us know what they want to put on the warrant, that's all.
Right.
Well, I think we, I think that's the problem is, I think what we, I think if I recall correctly, we want to, we have those numbers. We also said, the question is, if we were to buy out the lease.
Well, we'll have to get that number for their petition article. If the, if that passed and the town wanted to do it.
This is what it would cost.
Right.
So.
And then we need to have a conversation about what we, what we do or do not support recommending.
Well, if, if the petition article is written correctly and they want to just shut down. It, well.
I don't want to go into the particulars, but they can't make you do it.
Right.
A town meeting authorizes the selectman to do things. They can't make the selectman do things, for lack of a better way of putting it. So if you remember the whole conversation on Border Street.
Yes.
Town meeting was going to put up the money. The question was, well, are you going to buy it if we do it? Because they can't.
Compel.
They can't compel the board to do it.
Right.
So my goal from this article is that we don't have to deal with this, these conversations anymore.
Right.
That the town is going to decide whether they want it on or they want it off, or they want it off for some period of time, and that's it.
So maybe, yeah, we have a discussion to lay out what those, is it, we're proposing eleven to six or completely off or whatever? Like what are those, what are those choices?
Right, I think that's what we have to do with the financial implications within that article.
And then we, we would recommend or not recommend one of those, right?
Yep. Or we could be, all five of us could want a different one.
That's true.
Well, I think we just need a little more thinking about, I wouldn't take it off, obviously, because, just because there's a citizen's petition, which we know is, is not correctly drafted to begin with, but also even if it were adopted by the town, they can't make us do it anyway.
Or it could get IP'd and we don't get resolution. The goal to this is to get.
Is to get resolutions. I agree.
Whatever it is, if the town wants to buy out the lease, if the town wants to keep it running all day, every day, whatever it is, or somewhere between there.
As part of that article, it, there would be, you know, this is what, this is what it would cost us projected to just do it at night during the summer. This is what it would cost us to just do it at night all year round. This is what it would cost us to, uh, we'd, we'd probably have to get a number from Situate Wind for, if, a buyout number.
I think you need to pick what you want to recommend to the, I don't think you want to recommend at the town meeting. Here are your options, pick one. I think the board needs to say, we are putting forth an article to curtail the windmill oper, the turbine operation all year round from eleven PM to six AM.
That won't stop the discussion, though.
They won't.
It will. Because you'll just have, you'll just have all the backup information, to your point, your menu options to present on town floor as to what the cost of the town would be if that happened. And if somebody wants to amend the motion to make it year round, they do that. Like, that's how it works, right?
But that's not what he, he's saying.
If you go with the year-round curtailment, eleven to six.
Mm-hmm.
I think, and this will be up to the moderator, but I think an amendment on the floor could say, no, we only want to curtail it in the summertime.
Mm-hmm.
So to narrow that scope. If you put on just the summertime, I don't think you can broaden it because that would be potentially beyond the scope. But I just don't think you can go to town meeting saying, okay, you can vote to shut it down in the summertime. You can vote to shut it down in the winter time. You can vote to shut it down.
No, I understand that.
I can shut it down completely. I think the board needs to say, year round, eleven to six, this is what we're proposing. This is what it costs. The second option is the citizen's petition, which would request that we shut it down permanently. These are the costs, these are the implications. Blah, 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 blah.
Well, I think if, the second one's going to, you know, you're going to offer something and the alternative is not do anything. You know, you're going to get the full scope, but you either have one or two. You know, you're going to get the full scope, but you either have one or two choices.
But really, the only option beyond a full nighttime curtailment is to turn it.
Right, right.
Turn it off completely.
Right, that's right.
Or to leave it on all the time.
If the article fails.
Well, if the article fails, it will.
That would be.
Right.
That would be the result.
We're back to every day all year.
Right. Okay.
So, the option to curtail it would be Article 14, whatever it is.
Well, whatever, these are just.
What, I know, I'm just saying, I'm just picking a number. But then, the option to shut it down completely would be the petitioner's article.
Most likely, you would take, take it out of order, you'd debate it at the same time, and then vote on it at the same time.
All right.
Do we want a motion to close the warrant for spring annual and special town meeting?
Nice to ask a question before we do that? I still have one more question. Where are we going to see the options for the Pier 44? I don't want to see the options at the point in time when they come before us. I'd like to see them.
We'll have to speak to Andrew.
Yeah.
Well, I've been talking to Mr. Barkowitz. He's the chair of that commission. And I told him, he asked if he could have a placeholder for town meeting. And I said, I will ask to do that. However, I think the chances of you being ready to get there by that time are slim to none, which he understands.
Okay.
So, I think it's unlikely.
They almost ready to come before us?
No.
No? Okay.
They've got, they've got some work to do. He's been very diligent, he's been very, you know, he's been very good. But he needs, did we ever get the answer about the MBTA money? But you were going to fund that. Remember, the RFP?
They were looking for a short sum of money to have someone help write the RFP to get a consultant to do the design work to talk with. The cost that they presented to me has now doubled.
Yeah, which I didn't understand why.
And I thought it was way beyond what was required.
Right.
The consultant they also wanted to hire said, well, would model on this one we did for this town?
Well, then it should cost $2,000.
So, I told Kyle, well, why don't you get a copy of what they did for that town? We'll see if we can.
Yeah, I think.
Fix it, but where, what they wanted to spend was beyond what I was, had available and wanted to spend. And we still haven't heard back from the T.
Right.
I'll tickle, just remind them, I'll tickle them again tomorrow.
Okay. I will say, Kyle is driving that particular number because he's been in touch with MAPC and somehow or other, in all this go-around. So, it isn't the committee itself that came up with that number. So, I think if you could sort of, you know, talk to Kyle.
I was giving a number, I said, yeah, we could probably find that in some of our existing budgets, and then if the T, if the T says you can use that money, we can, Nancy can do a bookkeeping, and we can get it back. And then all of a sudden, the number doubled.
For an RFP, which.
I can't understand, it makes no sense to me, and I told Kyle I thought it was too much, and they were ripping us off.
Yeah, I don't want to go with you. So, if you could get from Kyle, but if, we're, that's where we are right now, folks. So, I think the chances of having a proposal ready to be presented at town meeting, I, you know, I don't see it happening, but I don't like to discourage our diligent committee heads and.
No, it's good to have a placeholder.
People who are pushing things ahead.
You can always take it off, can't put it back.
That's right, that's right.
I have one just quick question. On 20, Jim, you note that the, that there's a placeholder for municipal inter-agreement on sewer, regional sewer, can be done without town meeting?
Yes, Nancy is providing me with the statute, which is escaping me right now, but there is a statute that allows you to enter intermunicipal agreements in excess of three years, and it doesn't require a town meeting vote.
Because, as sewer commissioners?
No, just intermunicipal agreements. So, the issue about getting town meeting approval is under statute. The selectman generally can't enter into a contract that exceeds three years without a town meeting approval. So, that's why we wanted to put that on there. Nancy has found the statute that intermunicipal agreements, and she'll smack me in the back if I'm wrong, are not covered by that statute. The board has the authority to enter into intermunicipal agreements for a long duration.
Do you see the first financial implications?
Doesn't specify, it just says intermunicipal agreements.
Okay. Okay, great. So, is your recommendation to keep it there in case?
I want to leave it there and make sure the council signs off on it, but I'm pretty sure that we won't need it.
Okay, cool. That was on my question.
And now, do you like a motion?
I would, thank you.
Move that the Select Board close the warrant for spring annual and special town meetings to be held on Monday, April 11, 2022.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four, zero motion carries. All right, um. Annual license renewals? Is there a list?
I assume.
I want two.
Oh, yay. I'm kidding.
So, the.
Only two.
I would.
Move that the Select Board goes to renew the following common Vic licenses for 2022. Am I in the right one? Yes. By Hingham Yogurt Inc., doing business as Nona Homemade, and Situate Bagel, doing, doing business as Gunther Two Days.
Second, second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four, zero motion carries. Thank you. Liaison reports. Anybody got anything?
Just real quick, I don't think I mentioned that the Charter Review Public Meetings are tentatively scheduled, well, they're, they're more than pencil, but not quite ink, on January 27 at 7:00 p.m., which is, I think, a Thursday, and January 29, time in the afternoon to be determined, that's a Saturday. So, hopefully, we'll be ready to go with that. And I think everybody, Jim forwarded for planning the update of the project list, which is, is very interesting reading, so thank you for sending that along today, Jim.
Tony?
No.
No. One of your committees was here tonight.
Yep, no.
So, that's good.
Yeah, so they've done a great job, and then, no, no, no updates. The only thing is Affordable Housing Trust, we have something on the warrant here that we're, we'll bake in, in January and have more details later.
Great. I don't have anything. Our corresponding secretary is out, so he's, do we have any correspondent? I didn't actually see.
There's a letter.
There's a letter.
Which?
So, we do.
Oh, the Hummer Rock?
Yes, we do have a letter from a resident in Hummer Rock talking about the disposal of the debris during storms.
So, I assume DPW is going to go and talk to him, yes?
Have you spoken to him previously on this, so?
How do you tell what's naturally occurring, and how do you know what's? I mean, it just looks like a big mess down there.
Yeah.
You can't touch it now. So, if I wanted to go out and move stuff around?
What's the point?
Can't, well, you can't, you can only do it during an emergency situation.
CZM doesn't allow you.
So, when there's an emergency situation, we get out there, we do the best we can, put it back on the beach.
Yeah.
Not letting it wash back, but we've met with the resident in the past. I'm sure we'll talk to her again, but right now, we'll be able to do anything until something happened down there, we were cleaning up another storm.
Yeah. A lot of it's mother nature down there. Anybody have anything else?
I'll, I'll add, just to mention what Moore mentioned earlier, that town of Situate lost a real legend this past week. Al Kozlowski passed away very quickly and unexpectedly,